Article 13, Appropriate Funds, Police Cruiser.
A quorum being present, I call the annual town meeting back to order. It's nice to have everybody in the same room. It's a lot easier to hear. Actually, I probably don't need to yell as loud. But it should be all set. We've got a small visitor section up in the back left. If you're not a visitor, you don't want to be in those last couple of rows. You might not count. We have Mr. Hickey in the audience. Thank you for being here. I've forgotten where you are. Oh, there you are. So you don't have to use a doorstopper to gavel again? All right, let's get started. Article 10, Transfer Meals Tax to OPEB Trust Fund for Fiscal Year 2025.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to transfer the meals tax funds collected above $450,000 during fiscal year 25 to the OPEB trust fund. Hanover, like many Massachusetts communities, imposes a meals tax of .75% on restaurant meals sourced within the town. We have historically used 100% of the meals tax revenue to fund our other post-employment benefits, OPEB, and doing so has been vital to maintaining our strong credit rating with Moody's. A number of new restaurants have opened in Hanover over the past decade, and this has increased our annual meals tax revenue during that time from about $300,000 to about $700,000. This increased meals tax revenue allows us to continue funding OPEB while also providing relief to property taxpayers by using some of the meal tax revenue towards the operating budget. In FY25, the first $450,000 of the meals tax revenue will be allocated towards the operating budget and the remainder towards OPEB. We will revisit this allocation in FY26.
Questions or comments, Article 10.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. O'Connor.
The Select Board supports the Advisory Committee's commentary and motion. Throughout our review of the proposed fiscal year 2025 operating budget, we've prioritized searching for other sources of funding. Historically, the town of Hanover has earmarked meals tax revenue exclusively for our OPEB trust contributions. Given the sizable increase in our meals tax revenues the past few years thanks to our growing restaurant industry, the Select Board sees utilizing the first $450,000 in meals tax revenue for operating budget purposes as sensible. While Hanover residents pay this tax when dining in Hanover, the meals tax also provides us with an instrument to generate funds for our operational budget from non-residents.
Further questions or comments, Article 10. Seeing none, simple majority vote. All those in favor of the motion of the Advisory Committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries unanimously. Article 11, Water Enterprise Budget.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
So this is the first of several contingent motions in the warrant tonight. What that means is that the first part of the motion is what would happen if the override fails at the election, and, I'm sorry, succeeds. And the second part is what happens if it fails. At the start of any contingent motion, I'll just note that it's a contingent motion, so you can follow along. We move that should the override pass at both town meeting and the election, the town vote to appropriate $4,792,627 from Water Enterprise to defray Water Enterprise direct cost and that the $463,395 as appropriated in the general fund operating budget be used for water indirect cost. We move that should the override not pass, the town vote to appropriate $4,960,627 from Water Enterprise to defray Water Enterprise direct cost and that the $463,395 as appropriated in the general fund operating budget to be used for water indirect cost. Each item is to be expended by the town manager in accordance with Chapter 67 of the Acts of 2009, the Town Manager Act, for the purposes identified and those purposes only. And each item is to be considered a separate appropriation for that purpose only. Hanover utilizes a Water Enterprise fund, meaning that the town's water expenses are paid through water user fees. While the Water Enterprise budget does not directly impact property taxes, water rates do affect town residents with potentially higher water rates and fees. The most significant potential change this year is shifting the mandatory $168,000 stormwater expense from the general operating budget to the Water Enterprise budget if the town does not approve the override at the town election. The annual increase from the prior fiscal year, when including the $168,000 expense, is 7.7%, and without it is 4.4%.
Questions or comments under Article 11?
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, 11, yes. That's the first one. Thanks for the list.
An important note to add relevant to the Water Enterprise budget is that it is funded by water fees, not property taxes. While the water rates on the whole will need to be increased in fiscal year 2025 to cover the additional costs associated with this Water Enterprise budget, when the Select Board sets water rates in June for the following fiscal year, the Select Board has historically adopted a rate structure with a goal of minimizing the rate increases on our families and seniors.
Thank you. Further questions or comments under Article 11? Seeing none, simple majority vote on the contingent motion. All those in favor of the motion of the Advisory Committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries unanimously. Article 12, Appropriate Funds, Police Cruisers.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated to purchase and equip two police cruisers and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by like amount. This article will replace two existing all-wheel-drive style cruisers with two 4x4 SUV-style cruisers. 4x4 cruisers are far more effective and reliable compared to sedans or all-wheel-drive style vehicles for use by law enforcement, especially during significant weather events. Typically, the Hanover Police Department gets three years out of a frontline vehicle. The $150,000 accounts for two fully-equipped 4x4 police cruisers inclusive of lights, sirens, radios, medical lifesaving equipment. The Police Department initially requested three cruisers according to their normal vehicle replacement plan, but reduced that request to two cruisers given our budgetary challenges. This purchase is being funded through debt instead of free cash to minimize the use of free cash. Debt repayments will impact future years' operating budgets.
Questions or comments, Article 12. Seeing none, this requires a 2/3s majority to borrow. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries called unanimously. Article 13, Appropriate Funds, Police Portable and Cruiser Radios.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the sum of $140,000 be appropriated to purchase and equip portable radios for the Police Department and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by like amount. The useful lifespan of portable radios is typically seven to 10 years. Our current police radios are seven years old and becoming increasingly problematic and less reliable. These digital portable radios are utilized daily, exposed to all weather elements, and serve as vital link between officers and police dispatch. Replacement ensures the radios remain online and available for regular police use and emergencies without disruption of service. This purchase is being funded through debt instead of free cash to minimize use of free cash if the override is unsuccessful. Debt repayments will impact future fiscal years' operating budgets.
Questions or comments, Article 13. Seeing none, again, 2/3s to borrow. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries called unanimously. Article 14, Appropriate Funds, Replace 4x4 Pickup With Plow.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate from water retained earnings the sum of $75,000 to be used as set forth in this article. This is a planned replacement of a 2015 F-250 4x4 pickup truck for the water distribution foreman. The 2015 vehicle will be rotated down to replace a 2006 F-250 in the water treatment operation, which will be sold or traded in. In addition to this vehicle being used for its state-of-the-art purposes during emergency events, it is imperative that the town's frontline vehicles in DPW, Police Department, and Fire Department are properly sized and fully functioning. Water Enterprise retained earnings are similar to free cash and are most appropriately used for capital expenses or other one-time uses. This expense has no impact on property tax rates. Current certified retained earnings are $528,345, so the use of $75,000 for this vehicle will not have a direct impact on the town's water fees.
Questions, comments, Article 14. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries unanimously. Article 15, Appropriate Funds, Water Service Van.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate from water retained earnings the sum of $60,000 to be used as set forth in this article. This is a planned replacement of a 2013 water service van for the water distribution crew. The 2013 van will be rotated down to replace a 2009 water service van used by the water treatment crew. The 2009 van will be sold or traded in. Water service vans are used for the daily operation and maintenance of the distribution system. They carry tools, supplies, measuring devices, parts, et cetera, that are needed daily to maintain our hydrants, pipes, valves, and meters. During unplanned events such as a water main break, these vans are used to transport people, parts, tools, to and from the job site. Water Enterprise retained earnings are similar to free cash and are most appropriately used for capital expenses or other one-time uses. This expense has no impact on property tax rates. Current certified retained earnings are $528,345, and the use of $60,000 for this vehicle will not have a direct impact on the town's water fees.
Questions or comments, Article 15. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. So carries unanimously. If anybody in the back would like to come down, there's plenty of seats down here in the middle. There's some seats down in the front rows. You're welcome to stand if you want, but there's plenty of space if you'd like to take a second, come down. So that was called unanimous. Article 16, Increase Income-Based Senior Citizen Real Estate Tax Exemption.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. The town allows for a property tax exemption of $1,500 to qualified residents at least 65 years old with income below the limits and having lived in town for at least five years. Seven households applied for this exemption in FY23 and 11 in FY22. State law has recently allowed towns to increase the maximum income limit. The town understands the current difficult economic conditions, especially for our senior citizens on fixed and limited incomes. These conditions are made more difficult with the possible upcoming Proposition 2.5 override. This article increases the annual income limit to the maximum allowed by state law to help more senior citizens to benefit from a real estate tax exemption. We value the ability of our residents to remain in town, aging in place, and providing richness to our community.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. O'Connor.
When discussing our budget challenges this year, the Select Board was particularly mindful of the impacts to our senior residents. Increasing this particular exemption to the maximum allowed by the Commonwealth in support of keeping Hanover as affordable as possible for seniors is a proposal that the entire Select Board fully supports. select board fully supports.
Questions or comments under Article 16, Mr. Henderson?
Steve Henderson, 1118 Hanover Street. I just wanted to rise in support of this, especially in light of some of the commentary that was happening yesterday. I think this is an incredibly valuable and worthwhile article. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, Article 16, Mr. Nimmuskein?
Paul Nimmuskein, 151 Candlewood Lane. I also support this wholeheartedly, but I also would like to know if there's any type of communication that's going to be sent out to the seniors, because 11 and seven seems low to me.
Anything you would say about communication that's sent out to make sure people are aware of this?
Mr. Moderator? Chelsea Stevens, Finance Director. Yes, I can work with the assessors and work with the COA each year to make sure that the word gets out about any exemptions. And since this is an increase in, hopefully we can bring in more applicants, I mean, who are, who will now meet these limits. Part of the reason we had so few was because the income limit was very low, as it is currently. So I will work with the assessing office, but they do work closely with the COA to try to get the word out about these.
Further questions or comments on Article 16? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 17, Special Education Reserve Fund Transfer.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
This is another contingent motion that asks for two different things to happen depending on what happens at the override. We move that should the override pass at both town meeting and the election, the town vote to appropriate $300,000 from certified free cash for the purposes set forth in this article. We move that should the override not pass, the town vote to appropriate $750,000 from certified free cash for the purposes set forth in this article. Special education expenses are non-discretionary and must be covered to fulfill our school department's legal obligations. These expenses are dynamic throughout the year and can increase without notice based on unforeseen circumstances. Article 12 of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting established the Special Education Reserve Fund to be used for unanticipated special education expenses and to protect against potential resulting budgetary volatility. Special education expenses have increased significantly since FY22 based on tuition increases mandated by the Commonwealth, significant market increases in the cost of transportation, and significant increases in the number of students in out-of-district placements. The school department was forced to seek an additional $650,000 in funding through a special town meeting article last year to cover the budgetary overages from special education expenses. If the override does not pass, it is expected that the school department will have a similar significant need to fund special education expenses, though we expect the need will be significantly less if the override does pass. The advisory committee therefore recommends allocating $750,000 in free cash to be used exclusively for unanticipated special education expenses if the override does not pass, and $300,000 if the override does pass. A vote of both the school committee and the select board is required to access any of the funds, and unspent funds will carry over into ensuing fiscal years to defray any future unanticipated special education expenses.
Questions or comments under Article 17? Ron?
Eric Ron, 70 Heritage Way. Just, you know, nothing against the special education. I think it's great, and I think we should vote for this, but I'm just wondering, you know, what these are for, what these, this year, this expense is, and if they were, I keep hearing unforeseen, unanticipated, were they unforeseen, unanticipated? Thank you.
We'll see if we can get to an answer on what that money is spent on.
Michael Oates, Director of Finance Operations for the schools. This money is intended to be-
Excuse me for a second, quick second. You're not a resident, right?
Not a resident.
Not a resident speaks without objection. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. This funding is for expenses that are unanticipated. That could be students who move into our district. That can be changes in services for students in our district. This is for costs that are not budgeted the year before, and costs that exceed any of our budget projections.
Thank you. Further questions or comments, Article 17? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 18, appropriate funds, fuel canopy improvements.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
We move that the town vote to appropriate $30,000 from the bond premium receipts reserve fund for the purposes set forth in this article. This article will allow for the installation of an upgraded fire suppression system at the town fuel pumps located at our DPW facility on Ames Way. These pumps are used by Hanover DPW, Fire, and Police for regular gas and diesel. The current fuel canopy was built in the 1970s, has been deemed obsolete by our fire protection contractor, and the fire suppression system does not meet current code requirements. While the canopy itself could use some preventative maintenance, the fire suppression system is the priority. This project has been delayed multiple times, but it can wait no longer. Hanover's Finance Director has identified rebated funds from previous years' borrowing, which were generated from Hanover Municipal Bond proceeds, and will be used to fund this project.
Questions or comments, Article 18? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 19, appropriate funds, large area mower.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
We move that the sum of $100,000 be appropriated to purchase and equip a large-area mower, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This would be a new mower for the grounds division of DPW. The use would be primarily at Forge Pond Park, Hanover High School, and Hanover Middle School, properties with large areas of green grass that are heavily used by athletic groups. This upsized mower is twice the size of anything in our existing fleet, so it is projected that crews will spend about half the time mowing these properties, allowing them to mow all town properties on a more regular and aggressive schedule. During the summer months in particular, Hanover residents and athletic organizations have regularly voiced their expectations and desires that Hanover's fields and open spaces be well-manicured and playable. This mower should last 15 to 20 years. This purchase is being funded through debt instead of free cash to minimize the use of free cash if the override is unsuccessful. Debt repayments will impact future fiscal years' operating budgets.
Questions or comments under Article 19? Ted Hickey, 108 Circuit Street. I support this article, I just have a question. You gotta be close to the mic. I've heard that before. Ted Hickey, 108 Circuit Street. I support the article, I just have a question about the source, you know. It appears that we're now borrowing money to buy lawn mowers and wood chippers. I think that's a dangerous path to go down, so just wanted to inquire as to why we are borrowing for lawn mowers. We'll seek an answer for you. Sure, Mr. Doctor?
It's really the override. So we're putting, what, 1.8 million of free cash into the base budget in Article 8, and so if the override fails, we're going to be very low on our free cash. And so we're trying to limit the use of free cash as much as possible if the override does not pass. If the override does pass, there is also the benefit of having free cash to avoid another need for an override in the next five years. There were some presentations that it looked like there were some possibilities that some department increases in the future might be above 2.5%, and the advisory committee is steadfast in avoiding another override in the next five years. So reserving our free cash as an option is the best way to further that goal. But ideally, without this override situation, we would not be borrowing for these items. Normally, we would be using free cash, as Mr. Hickey pointed out.
Further questions or comments, Article 19? Seeing none, this requires two-thirds to borrow. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll see hands just to make sure I've got two-thirds to borrow. All those in favor will raise their hands. All opposed will raise their hands. Motion achieves the necessary two-thirds. If anyone would like to question the count, please rise. Two-thirds is achieved. I will note that in 27 minutes, you have completed more articles than we did last night. Article 20, appropriate funds, wood chipper replacement.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
We move that the sum of $90,000 be appropriated to purchase and equip a wood chipper, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs appropriated by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This article funds the replacement of a 1998 wood chipper that is used for general purposes and storm emergencies to help clear trees and associated debris from town roadways, sidewalks, facilities, ballfields, et cetera. The replacement wood chipper would include updated safety mechanisms that are not on the current wood chipper. Given the critical use of this equipment and the safety concerns, the advisory committee supports this article. The DPW expects over 25 years of use out of this new wood chipper. This purchase is being funded through debt instead of free cash to minimize use of free cash if the override is unsuccessful. Debt repayments will impact future fiscal years' operating budgets. This article funds the replacement of an aging wood chipper that is-
Seems repetitive.
It does seem repetitive.
I think we have sufficient commentary.
I think so.
Questions or comments under Article 20? Seeing none, this requires two-thirds to borrow. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion achieves the necessary two-thirds. Article 21, appropriate funds, 72-inch mower replacement.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
We move that the town vote to appropriate $20,000 from the bond premium receipts reserve fund for the purposes set forth in this article. This is a planned replacement of a circa 2072-inch mower used primarily by the public grounds division of DPW. During the grass-growing season, this mower is used constantly every day. Hanover's DPW is responsible for mowing over 100 acres of public grounds, including cemeteries, schools, and recreation facilities. Hanover's Finance Director has identified rebated funds from previous years' borrowing, which were generated from Hanover Municipal Bond proceeds, and will be used to fund this project.
Questions or comments, Article 21? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Oh, yeah, I should read the title. Good point. Article 22, appropriate funds, transfer station scale replacement.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Doctor?
We move that the sum of $185,000 be appropriated for the purchase of a vehicle scale for the transfer station, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This project will replace the existing vehicle truck scale at the transfer station. The existing scale was installed in the mid-1990s and is at the end of its useful life. The ramps on either end are severely deteriorated, the decking is corroded, and the load cells regularly fail due to 30 years of weather exposure. This scale is used daily and is our means of monitoring materials coming and going to the transfer station. Without a working scale, the town is unable to accurately charge residents who use the C&amp;D service, and more importantly, the town is unable to check and verify the invoices received from our hauling contractors, who charge us by the ton for the disposal of all of our waste and recyclables. If the town is unable to provide an accurate weighing mechanism, contractors inadvertently or purposefully could invoice us for greater amounts than they are taking. This purchase is being funded through debt instead of free cash to minimize the use of free cash if the override is unsuccessful. Debt repayments will impact future fiscal years' operating budgets.
Questions or comments, Article 22? Seeing none, this requires two-thirds to borrow. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Mr. Satterwhite, are you getting up? Article 22, amend general bylaws. 23, sorry. 23, amend general bylaws, addition of eligibility of elected town officials, town officers bylaw. Mr. Satterwhite?
Greg Satterwhite, 127 Walnut Street. I move that town meeting accept this article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Do you have any commentary?
I do not.
Questions or comments under? Mr. Doctor, do you have a comment?
Mr. Moderator?
You didn't have a printed comment, so I didn't-
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, you do. Sorry.
Current bylaws allow one person to hold multiple town-elected positions. This article would amend the bylaws to allow any one person to hold only one elected town position at a time. Persons who hold more than one town-elected office have a disproportionately increased influence on the workings, policies, and decision-making process of the town, the result of which is a dilution of the checks and balances important to the fair and equal administration of local government. The advisory committee supports the motion of the petitioners.
Questions or comments, Article 22? Mr. Moderator? Mr. Delaney?
Do you have some commentary regarding this article?
Yes, please.
I'd like to share it up at the podium, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Delaney. I reside at 78 Hanover, and I just have a few thoughts on this article that I would like to share. As an outgoing member of the select board on my third term, I was not going to comment on this article, but I do have the distinction of being one individual resident in Hanover and taxpayer that has been elected to two boards and are currently serving on two boards until Election Day. So I thought that it would be pertinent for me to share my thoughts because a number of people were asking me what my thoughts were on the Dave Delaney rule for whatever that's worth. But anyway, and please bear with me, I don't intend to take up too much of your time. I know everyone's time is valuable, and we spent a lot of time here last evening, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts on this proposed bylaw amendment. I would like to start by thanking all the voters who supported me over the years to represent your interests in town matters, both large and small. Since 2003, I have represented the interests of taxpayers, both residential and commercial, as an appointed member of the zoning board of appeals from 2003 to 2016, an elected member of the Board of Assessors from 2014 to present, and an elected member of the select board from 2015 to present. Each time I've run for these offices, I have topped the ticket and will forever be grateful to the voters of Hanover for putting their faith in me. I've lived in Hanover since 1976, in attendance at Center, Sylvester, and Hanover Junior High Schools, before moving on to BCI, Boston College, and Marquette University Law School in Milwaukee. Since 2003, I have dedicated 21 years of my life as a volunteer in these capacities due to my upbringing, my education, and a personal enjoyment of meeting and helping others, and mainly due to my love for the town of Hanover. As a member of the ZBA, I sat on over 500 cases. During this time, I used my voting power to help residents put additions on their homes as their families grew, add farmers' porches and swimming pools, and intervene in battles between neighbors over where sheds should be able to be located to house their lawn tools. Additionally, I have helped local businesses to locate, grow, and thrive in Hanover. I participated in many meetings involving- I participated in many meetings involving forty-B projects in town, mitigating the impact for local residents in some cases, and helping to prevent forty-B projects that weren't beneficial to the town and others. I was the final and deciding vote on whether or not to allow what is now Forge Pond Park to become the great sports and recreational facility that it has become. As a member of the select board, I was later able to be part of approving a long-term plan to provide for the ongoing maintenance of these facilities through budget strategies of the town. I have voted to help businesses like Wendy's to move into vacant bookstore building, consulted to help Chick-fil-A to replace a tired and weary Burger King restaurant, helped McDonald's to overcome nuances in the bylaws to be allowed to renovate their building to adapt from old methods and practices to serve their future customers from a completely renovated facility. I was involved in a case to help Town Fair Tire to navigate the bylaws and occupy what was then a vacant Blockbuster Video Building. I have also helped other businesses in many ways during challenging economic times when they needed it most. Some of these businesses include Hanover Crossing, Starland, Cape Way Sanoco, Brothers Grill, and all of the local liquor stores when they were facing the possibility of a large conglomerate moving in and threatening the long-term viability of their small businesses. Many of the business owners I have helped are also fellow residents and taxpayers in Hanover. In over five hundred cases, not once was there an issue, complaint, or problem of any nature regarding my membership or participation as a member of the zoning board of appeals. As an elected member of the five-member select board, I helped find a replacement for an accomplished but dismissed town manager, helped determine the future of Hanover Crossing Project, including both a tax incentive financing package and a housing element, assisted the school department in many cases where there were concerns about meeting the budget prior to annual town meeting, and helped many residential and commercial taxpayers with issues facing them in town from reestablishing and improving the crosswalks at Mayette's Country Store, finding ways to slow down traffic in Broadway, fixing drainage issues at Sullivan's Funeral Home, and many others. Much of the work accomplished as a member of these boards goes on behind the scenes and unnoticed, as it should. With my colleague, Mr. Tuzik, I once visited a gravely injured dump truck driver at a local hospital after an accident on Broadway, at a time when social media groupies found it more appropriate to blame him for driving too fast, which in fact, he wasn't. I have played roles in helping Foo Truck Night, Hanover Winterfest, and working with the Hanover Pride Group a few years ago, I helped to establish what is now Hanover's third annual Don't Hide the Pride event, coming up on Saturday, June first, this year. Over the years, I have represented the town at many local events, seminars, and celebrations like these, all as an unpaid volunteer. At one point, I served concurrent terms on the ZBA, Board of Assessors, and Select Board. During these terms of service from two thousand three to present, I have dedicated hundreds of hours of my valuable time for the betterment of the town of Hanover. I have missed many family dinners, many of my son's school events and ballgames, including last night's game for the BCI volleyball team, for this volunteer position. I have also sacrificed my time missing many events that I would have loved to have attended for which I had purchased tickets. A great example of this is tonight's Celtics-Cavalier game going on as I speak. I've spent thousands of dollars of my own money to purchase signs and advertising pieces and thank my many supporters for hosting these signs over the past nine years. As a business owner, I have always done my best to treat my customers with respect and dignity. I provided dozens of Hanover kids with summer jobs. I have supported the purchase of championship rings for the Hanover High School hockey on occasion. I have also sponsored the entire Little League by purchasing the uniforms during some seasons. During some thirty-three years of service across these three boards, the only times a formal complaint was brought against me was an open-meeting law complaint filed by the town clerk, which was later found to be meritless, and my decision to wear a T-shirt supporting the candidacy of my good friend for reelection to this volunteer select board in two thousand twenty-two. I have been told lately of people posting on social media, asking why I don't recuse myself from votes involving the commercial residential tax rate. As both a business owner and a homeowner, I would argue that I am the most objective member of the select board on this issue. I have heard of no complaints that my fellow board members should have recused themselves because they own a home and not a business, and thus have a more likely potential conflict of interest. I think we can all see how ridiculous this concern is from either side of the argument. I think I looked at issues in town from the perspective of both the residential and commercial taxpayers, and I believe that the way to increase the commercial tax base in Hanover is to promote ways to encourage more businesses to locate and thrive in Hanover, rather than unduly burden the ten percent commercial tax property owners with more taxes. In my own case, I am fortunate to have several great local small businesses tenants on the property where my business is located. These businesses include Mineke, Avis, Storybook Cove, Shoestring's Dent Studio, All Phase Electric, and Three-R Plumbing, which is a veteran-owned plumbing company that has grown from a two-man operation to having twelve or fifteen employees over the past few years. All of these great small businesses helped to carry the tax burden of a property that was once a desolate lot with rundown, derelict, and burned-down buildings, which generated very little tax revenue for the town of Hanover. Some of these business owners are also residents in Hanover. The idea that I have participated as an appointed and elected member of these boards over the years in order to somehow benefit my own wallet demonstrates an inherent misunderstanding of what it takes to be a volunteer member of any or all of these boards. I have served on these boards due to my love for the town of Hanover and have always made decisions that I feel were in the best interest of the town. If my taxes had been waived for the past twenty-one years, it still wouldn't replace the countless hours I've spent doing my best for the town, rather than making memories with my family. The right of an individual to be elected was established in seventeen eighty by Article nine of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights. The seventeen eighty Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was drafted by John Adams. It is the world's oldest functioning written constitution, and it served as a model for the U.S. Constitution. As far as I can see, this seventeen eighty Declaration of Rights doesn't speak to limiting one who is willing to run for more than one office, volunteer or otherwise. While I'm sure that there are many intelligent minds behind the conception, development, and presentation of this proposed Article twenty-three, I'd argue that John Adams was at least as sharp, if not more so, than the proponents of the petition Article twenty-three. At a time when it is difficult to attract people to run for these volunteer positions, an effort to prohibit taxpaying residents from running for election to volunteer boards is a dangerous and slippery slope. I believe that Article twenty-three is a proposed solution in search of a problem. Perhaps it was politically motivated, in which case it is currently irrelevant anyway. If someone can point to a situation where my actions and votes as a member of these boards over the past twenty-one years has diluted any checks and balances or done the town of Hanover harm in any way, I would welcome the discussion in person, like adults. There are many other influential multi-member boards in town, including the ones supporting this article. I find it noteworthy that this article has conveniently overlooked the possibility that a member of an influential appointed board would still be allowed to run for elected office and have the same perceived dilution of checks and balances, yet this does not seem to be a concern. If the goal here is to dissuade and discourage volunteerism in the town of Hanover, I would urge you to vote yes on Article twenty-three. If you feel that taxpaying residents, willing to volunteer their time, should be able to be elected by their peers to serve on these boards and committees, to help Hanover to continue to be a great place to live, work, and raise a family, I strongly suggest voting no on Article twenty-three. At best, I suggest this idea be remanded to the zoning bylaw review committee to consider including the appointed members in this proposed prohibition. In my opinion, this idea should be remanded to the trash bin, so we can all continue to work to find solutions to real problems like the ones Hanover is currently facing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Eric Grun, Seventy-Heritage Way. I'll make this as quick as possible, this is part of duty of the... as Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee. Thank you, Moderator Thompson. My name is Eric Grun. I live at Seventy-Heritage Way. I'm Chair of the Town of Hanover Bylaw Review Committee. The Bylaw Review Committee reviewed proposed amendments to bylaws covered in this meeting, warrant articles twenty-three, thirty, and thirty-two. Twenty-three and thirty successfully went through the Bylaw Review Committee process and are included on the warrant for this meeting. Article twenty-three did not undergo full review due to the time submission, but was included in a public hearing. All requests for new or amendment bylaw review by the Bylaw Review Committee undergo the same process, submission of the bylaw amendment and related information by completing the bylaw proposal form on the Bylaw Review Committee webpage found through the Town of Hanover website. Review of the bylaw amendment or proposed bylaw by the Bylaw Review Committee, multiple criteria including proper review by town council, sponsor, understanding of the current affected bylaws, needed communication with town stakeholders, correct format, language as an article for town meeting, and other review items. As bylaw reviews come in over the year, the bylaw amendment sponsors are invited to the Bylaw Review Committee meeting to introduce and summarize new bylaw or bylaw amendments. At this meeting, the Bylaw Review Committee and other invited town stakeholders will give recommendations to prepare the language and bylaw for an article on the town meeting warrant. The new or amended bylaw sponsor edits the bylaw for submission as an article for the warrant town meeting. A public hearing is announced to the public and held by the Bylaw Review Committee and a town meeting, where bylaw amendment sponsors present their article summary to have comment by the public. Thank you for all participants in the process, specifically the Bylaw Review Committee Fred Freeman, Joan Kuhn, Rachel Rivkind, Thomas Coogan, Steve Ryerson, Director of Communications, Janet Tierney, Director of Public Affairs, Joe Colangelo, Town Manager, Article twenty-three, Joe Colangelo, Article thirty, Greg Satterwhite... oh, sorry, that's wrong. Article twenty-three, Greg Satterwhite. Article thirty-two, Joe Colangelo. Thank you, Select Board, Dave Delaney, Rhonda Nyman, John Tuzik, Vanessa O'Connor, Steve Lucio. Thank you for all you do for Hanover.
Thank you, Mr. Grun. Further questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Seeing... Mr. Satterwhite.
Greg Satterwhite, one twenty-seven Walnut Street. First of all, I'd just like to start out by saying, thank you, Mr. Delaney, for your long service to our town. I really appreciate all that you've done for our town, and I take your sentiments seriously. One point I would like to make about Dave's comments, I did reach out to Dave back in December before I moved forward with this proposal to talk it through. I would have been amenable to any type of grandfathering in for this article, and it was not my intention that this be the do-something-the-Dave-Delaney article. This is not an article looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. This is an article to make sure, in the future, that no one person holds more than one position, elected position, in our town simultaneously. And I strongly believe that any individual who does so, possibly in the future, might have more of an influence on the workings of our town. Just want to mention that most of the towns and cities in Massachusetts have exactly this type of bylaw. Just to name a few, Easton, Chelmsford, Millbury, Thelmoth, Marshfield, Orleans, Salisbury, Wakefield, Walpole, Winchester, Yarmouth, and I could go on and on. The article that I've put forth is a little bit more specific than the other articles in the Commonwealth, which most simply state something to the effect, "Any voter shall be eligible to hold any elective town office, provided however, no person shall simultaneously hold more than one elective office." There are also lots of other bylaws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts where there are specific offices that persons cannot hold simultaneously. And to speak to some of the concerns that Dave had, some of those are specific to advisory committee and other positions. I'm not sure where... exactly where he was going with that. I am a volunteer on the AdCom Committee. If I attain elective office, I would immediately be required to step down from the advisory committee. So again, I think this is an article that makes a lot of sense for us. It will prevent any issues from coming up in the future, and I wholly hope that you would support this article. I think it makes sense for Hanover, as it does for many other towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Further questions and comments, Article twenty-three? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion of Mr. Satterwhite will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll see hands on this. All those in favor of the motion of Mr. Satter...
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article authorizes the town manager to accept Chapter ninety funds as allocated by the state legislature for the highway improvements in the town. The town uses these funds primarily to repair and maintain our approximately eighty-seven miles of local public roadways. We anticipate receiving approximately five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in FY25. However, the actual amount we end up with is determined by the state legislature. It is important to note that this Chapter ninety funding does not adequately cover the cost of fully maintaining the road system within Hanover. Additional funding will be needed in future years for major road repair and paving.
Questions and comments, Article twenty-four? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article twenty-four will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article twenty-five, Ms. O'Connor?
We move that the town vote to accept this article as printed in the warrant.
Do you have commentary?
No.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The planning board voted unanimously during their meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-four, based on the recommendation of the DPW director in support of Laurel Lane's acceptance by the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting as a town-owned road and right-of-way. Within the right-of-way, there is the roadway, sidewalk, trees, signage, curbing, drainage, and a water line. The town's acceptance of this new street is in accordance with past practices and current standards.
Questions and comments, Article twenty-five? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion of the select board will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article twenty-six, peg access and cable-related fund.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from the peg access and cable receipts reserve fund for the purposes set forth in this article. This article appropriates funds to the peg access and cable-related fund, which will be used to support Hanover community television and related activities such as, but not limited to, personnel, equipment, training, et cetera, as well as funding for educational classes in partnership with Hanover High School.
Questions and comments, Article twenty-six? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article twenty-seven, set limits on revolving funds. Mr. Doctor.
Mr. Moderator. We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article establishes limits on spending from various revolving funds with no changes from FY24. The advisory committee supports the recommendation of the town manager and finance director as to the specific spending limit amounts.
Questions, comments, Article twenty-seven? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article twenty-eight, appropriate funds, funding for town costs required to run Winterfest and Hanover Day.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from certified free cash for the purposes set forth in this article. Intensive resources are required for the Hanover Police Department, Fire Department, and DPW to support Hanover Day and Winterfest. These costs have increased significantly. The timing of Hanover Day so late in the fiscal year, that ends on June thirtieth, makes it difficult to assure sufficient funds are available within the operating budget, especially if unanticipated events such as multiple winter storms happen during the year. Funding these events through this separate article will ensure sufficient funds are available. The advisory committee recommends revisiting the funding mechanism for this expense in future years, given its consistent and recurring nature.
Ms. O'Connor?
Mr. Moderator. The Select Board supports funding Winterfest and Hanover Day as a standalone town meeting article. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five is the first time these events have been funded this way, and the decision particularly regarding Hanover Day is a result of discussions the Select Board has had with the town manager, finance director, and culture council. Hanover Day typically takes place on the last weekend of the fiscal year, and the timing of this can be difficult to account for, as staff is trying to close the books on the fiscal year at that time. Additionally, unexpected events such as multi-year nor'easters can easily blow up the year's budget, causing challenges to our ability to supply necessary town resources at the very end of the fiscal year. To avoid these challenges and guarantee funding for these two popular community events, setting aside the necessary funds so that they can be used only on them, and providing town meeting voters with direct control as to whether or not town funds will be used for them... for them is the most pragmatic solution.
Questions or comments? Wait. 28 was done, run 29. Sorry, I actually lost my place.
No, we're on 28.
I am on 20. We're still on Winterfest in Hanover Day, right? I looked ahead and then didn't flip back. My apologies. Further questions or comments, Article 28? Going too fast here. Simple majority vote. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 29, Appropriate Funds, Basketball Court Renovations.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
This is a negative motion. We move that the town not accept this article and take no further action. The advisory committee does not support the timing of this article, given our current budgetary challenges and uncertainty, though we do appreciate the need for quality recreational facilities and will consider supporting such a project in future years.
Ms. O'Connor?
Mr. Moderator. One Select Board goal for this year was to explore improvements to our public basketball courts. Hanover's outdoor basketball courts, particularly the courts at B Everett Hall Field and Myrtle Street, are some of our most-used facilities in town. Everyone who drives through the center of town, especially in the summer, sees how much use they get, from first thing in the morning until the lights go out at 10:00 PM. As a community, we prioritize providing healthy, social, low-cost, and fun outdoor recreational activities. The $100,000 from this article was intended to be set aside and used over multiple years to upgrade outdoor basketball courts around town, specifically to retrofit the existing poles with new backboards and hoops that have, excuse me, specifically to retrofit the existing poles that have weathered several decades of use with new backboards and hoops and to resurface the courts. Based on further research and advisory committee feedback, we suggest an amendment to this article to power the, to lower the allocation to $50,000, which will allow the replacement of the hoops and backwards, backboards at the B Everett Hall Field and Myrtle Street Courts this year. We will revisit funding resurfacing the courts at a future date. As such, the Select Board asks that this body defeat the advisory committee negative motion so that we can make a motion to reduce the appropriation of funds from $100,000 to $50,000.
Further questions or comments, Article 29? Mr. Grund?
Eric Grund, 70 Heritage Way. Is there any safety issue here?
We'll see if we can get an answer to that question. With the current condition, I imagine you're saying for kids playing on it, is it still safe?
I don't believe there are any current safety issues with the courts. They're certainly tattered, but they're not unsafe.
Mr. Nimiskin?
Paul Nimiskin, 151 Candlewood Lane, co-chair of the Hanover Day Committee. We use that as part of the event and it's used every day I drive by it, but a couple of the rims are not proper for basketball. They're like bent, so they actually do need to replace, although it's probably not $50,000 worth. I do like the Select Board's suggestion to have them resurfaced as well, so I support whatever the Select Board just said.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The advisory committee continues to recommend against even the $50,000 of free cash for this project. Again, we have significant uncertainty as what is going to happen with the override coming up at the election. And if the override does not pass, we need to make sure that we maintain our free cash balance. Being able to address this in a thoughtful way with a recreational plan makes sense and it's something that certainly we could revisit next year, but this year, the advisory committee has explicitly tried to limit free cash wherever possible.
Mr. Mantell?
Dan Mantell, 64 Paul Road. Is it possible to do a contingent amendment? Do $50,000 unless the override passes?
Meaning something like $50,000 if the override passes and nothing if the override doesn't pass?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think that that was a reasonable, it's not a motion to make right now. I suppose you're saying that you agree with, Ms. O'Connor, do you want to comment on that potential for a contingent article? You don't have to.
Essentially, essentially, so essentially, if the motion, the AdCom motion is defeated, then our motion, when our motion comes up for $50,000, if they wanted to be contingent upon the override passing or continuing to pass, which I think seems reasonable. Is anyone looking to objection here?
I think in general, the Select-
Happening is it might not-
Apo- sorry, apologies.
You just want to be able to hear better?
Yeah.
Oh, no, they were talking amongst themselves because they have to decide if they're going to comment as a board on that. So go ahead, Ms. O'Connor.
I think the consensus of the board is that we are in agreement with that proposed motion, so if the AdCom motion is defeated, we would be amenable to making our motion that the $50,000 towards these, towards this article, as we've amended it, would be contingent upon the override passing.
Further questions or comments on this article? Okay, we are voting on the negative motion of the advisory committee under Article 29 to not accept this article and not do anything with the basketball courts. So all those in agreement with the advisory committee will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll see hands on this. All those in agreement with the advisory committee to not do this will raise their All those opposed to the advisory committee motion? Advisory committee motion fails. Ms. O'Connor, I remind you, you're not amending, you're just making a positive motion for $50,000, however contingent.
Okay, let me try this, I handed this on my feet. We move that the town-
Yeah, close to the mic.
We move that the town accept this article with the amendment that the sum shall be $50,000 for the replacement of hoops and backboards at the B Everett Field and Myrtle Street Basketball Courts, such amount to be contingent upon the override passing. If the override does not pass, no allocation.
Oh, and Vanessa? Yeah, you need to say it's from free cash.
From, and that would all be, that would be, that $50,000 would be from free cash.
We're going to work on this so you can read it back. What have you got so far? We move that, I've got, we move that the town accept this article at the expenditure, at an expenditure level of $50,000. To, you said to do something, you had a to do-
I'm sorry, to replace the hoops and the backboards at the B Everett Hall Field and the Myrtle Street Basketball Courts.
Okay, so hold on, we're going to pause there for a second. All right, I think we've got it. If you could settle back down again, we're going to do the you read to me and I read into the microphone. We move that the town accept this article, I'm speaking from Ms. O'Connor's, I'm not advocating. We move that the town accept this article-
At an expenditure level of $50,000 of free cash- To replace the hoops and backboards- At the Myrtle Street and B Everett Hall Basketball Courts. Such amounts to be contingent upon the override passing.
All right. Questions or comments on the article, on the motion of the Select Board? Mr. Evans, are you coming to the microphone?
Kathy Hassy, 22, Broaden Street. I thought there was also mention in there of doing pavement.
I'm sorry, so I think your question was, thank you for introducing yourself.
The motion that Ms. O'Connor originally, that she mentioned when she first spoke it, I believe it had the wording of pavement in there and I didn't hear that come out of, of the, of the motion that you just read.
I believe what she said and I think it's correct, that $50,000 was towards the hoop renovation and everything like that and they'd have to do the pavement at a later date? Is that the thinking?
Oh, okay.
So being at 50 instead of 100, it's no pavement?
Sorry.
No problem. Mr. Evans?
Ken Evans, 481 King Street. This may be kind of picky, but what about the pole that it's standing on? If we're going to replace those nice, you know, have nice backboards, we've got to attach them to something. I don't know if those backboards, those poles, which are so old, are going to attach to anything that is brand new.
We'll see if we can get an answer for you, sir.
Make sure there's some leeway there.
Yes, so the answer to that question is that the, the poles do not need to be replaced. The poles are sturdy, there is no structural issues with them, they're sound, they've got another few decades in them, as far as I understand it, so there is no need to replace them, which is why we have not sought to replace them with these funds.
Further questions or comments, Article 29? Seeing none, we're now voting on the Select Board's motion to spend $50,000 of free cash on the hoops and backboards, but only if the override passes. If the override fails, this article doesn't matter. So all those, the simple majority, all those in favor of the motion of the Select Board will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries. Article 30, amend general bylaws, animal control bylaw. Ms. O'Connor, is this you? Article 30?
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. The Select Board identified this general bylaw amendment early on in the process this year as a proposal to ask town meeting voters to support. Dog hearings at the Select Board level do not happen often, but have increased in volume over the last several years. Hanover's general bylaws currently provide for this appeal right to the Select Board prior to a final appeal to District Court. However, the appeal to the Select Board is unnecessary under the laws of the Commonwealth. Eliminating the unnecessary burden of an appeal to the Select Board saves the town and aggrieved parties time, funds, and resources.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The current animal control bylaw allows an appeal of an order by the animal control officer to the town manager, then the Select Board, and then to the District Court. In any appeal to the District Court, the court reviews the termination of the town manager without consideration for the decision of the Select Board, making the Select Board review unnecessary. This article will remove the Select Board review, thereby adding efficiency, decreasing the time to obtain a final determination, and potentially reducing legal fees.
Questions or comments, Article 30? Seeing none, this is a simple majority, general bylaw. All those in favor of the motion of the Select Board will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 31, amend zoning bylaws, insert new Section 6.18.0, Route 3 corridor sign overlay district. Ms. Bragnoli?
Mr. Moderator.
You want to probably move that microphone down so it's right in your face.
Myriam, is that good?
Yes.
Myriam Bragnoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. We move that Article 31 be referred back to the Planning Board for further study. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Zoning Act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 7:30 PM, in person and by Zoom in the second-floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall 550, Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass We don't have any commentary on this article.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The advisory committee supports referring this article for further study.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a motion to refer back to the Planning Board for further study. Oh, I'm sorry, come on out.
Sorry about that. Stephen Carroll, 91 King Street. I've lived in Hanover 27 years, volunteered on numerous committees, Park and Rec, CPC, Housing Authority, now Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I can honestly say this is the most one-sided, lopsided article I've ever seen written and I can't believe it actually made it to the floor of the town meeting. I learned about this issue attending a Select Board meeting back in March, looking for something completely different and fell upon this. In my first several years of my career, I actually worked for a billboard company and I was curious to see, you know, what was happening here and I wanted to become more informed on this matter. In summary, we have a company who wants to install a billboard in Hanover, which is a non-conforming use, it's not allowed in our zoning bylaws right now. At the Select Board meeting in March, the company goes by the name of Interstate was represented by a high-powered Boston lobbyist and a law firm, Mince Levin, red flag number one. It was learned at that meeting that the bylaw, I'm sorry, the law firm, Mince Levin, representing the company, actually wrote the bylaw. Red flag number two. I also found out that they already had a lease on a property in Hanover for a proposed billboard that isn't even allowed yet. Red flag number three. It was also learned at this meeting that only one billboard would be allowed in this new overlay district. So essentially, this bylaw, which was written by the proponent, was written for them. And since only one billboard is allowed in this district, obviously because they have the lease. The part that concerns me, there was zero community in a butter meetings to discuss the impacts of this project, where the public would be invited to hear and comment and offer feedback. I, again, I found this out by happenstance, just attending a Select Board meeting, not even looking at this. Something seemed off, it looked like this was trying to be steamrolled through without any community participation. We pride ourselves in Hanover of being an inclusive community where anything and everything is discussed in an open forum. Case in point, the color of the town hall, which took, I think, two years. Back to the bylaw, the town has taken a very dangerous precedent of rewriting an entire section of a bylaw for the benefit of the one company, as long as they write us a check for $50,000 a year. Recently, the town passed later-rejected digital signs. This is a digital sign that will be 85 feet up in the air. The Planning Board, and I applaud them, who are the custodian of the zoning bylaws and responsible for putting forth articles on zoning amendments, does not support this. At the April 8th meeting, Chairman Bragnoli appropriately stated that this was not endorsed by the Planning Board. At that same April Planning Board meeting, the proponent showed drone test photos showing the visual impacts of the proposed sign. The drone at best is two by two, give it three by three, so maybe four, six square feet. Each proposed billboard face is 672 square feet. They were trying to do an apples-and-apples comparison of a two-square-foot drone to a 672-square-foot sign, which is really 1,300 and change because it's a proposed back-to-back illuminated sign. I understand the need to investigate all different sources of revenue for the town based on the recent override and the financial pressures on our lower-income and senior population, but this is the wrong way to accomplish this. This article is totally one-sided for the benefit of one company, provides limited financial benefits to the town, and given the lack of open and honest communication with the community and the butters, I urge you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm, I'm going to clarify, sir, I'm going to judge based on your commentary that you actually want to vote yes, because we're moving to refer it back to the Planning Board for further study and not do it. So I imagine you're in favor of that.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. O'Connor?
I may need some procedural help. I omitted to read our commentary to this motion. Is it too-
It's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. In early March, a private group presented to the Select Board seeking to work with the town on a location for a billboard on Group 3. Seeing merit in the proposal as a low-cost and low-impact way to generate non-tax revenue, the Select Board asked for an overlay district to be prepared for consideration on the annual town meeting warrant. However, we understand that there is more work to be done to understand the nuance and ramifications of this proposed overlay district, so we support remanding this back to the Planning Board for additional study.
I have someone waiting, but Ms. Bragnoli, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Myriam Bragnoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. As Mr. Carroll pointed out, the Planning Board denied this and we didn't ask. As Mr. Carroll pointed out, the planning board denied this, and we didn't ask to have it brought back to us for further study. It was given to us. I don't know what we're going to study, since we already denied it, but perhaps something new will come along. Thank you.
I'll come up here.
Mr. Moderator, permission for a non-resident to speak?
Right, right. Tighten the microphone, please.
Mr. Moderator, permission for a non-town resident to speak?
You are.
I'm the high, I'm Joe Rull, Beacon Strategies, Shawman Strategies in Boston.
And so, Mr.?
Okay. All right.
He has asked permission to speak on this article, but he does so without objection. Do I have any objections?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir. You're not granted the opportunity.
Thank you for your time.
Alrighty. Further questions on the motion to refer? Come on, come on. Got to get through. Further questions on the motion to refer? Yes, please.
Jason Factor, 34 Briarwood Drive. My question would be, does this proposal, is this proposal to create a zone in this area for a future billboard, is it specific to this one bid? And is this something that could eventually lead to other billboards in this zone, or is it exclusive to this one bid and company? Because, as we all know, we are working towards finding ways to generate revenue and not burden taxpayers. Something of this nature could be a solution to that in the future. So I guess my question would be, this one bid seems to have revenue back to the town. Is that something that would be unique to this one bid? Or is that something that would be required to put a billboard in this particular zone if something like this should pass after review?
So I would tell, and we can seek an answer, but I would, I would largely tell you that, since it looks like it's going to refer, the planning board holds many open meetings on this, and they're the ones that would go into all the details of what would be required or what would be allowed and such. So I would highly recommend, if this motion to refer passes, that you go to the planning board meeting and express your, your interest, support, you know, dislike or whatever, because that's where the whole details would be made if this was going to come back to a vote at town meeting in the future. But Ms. Brugnoli may have an answer, at least at some level, for your question. Ms. Brugnoli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myriam Brugnoli, 226 Latchmont Lane. This was the, to the gentleman who was just speaking, this is the, was the?
Closer to the mic, Myriam. You can't look at him, you got to look at the mic.
He always says that to me. This was the, this was the only site that was proposed for the billboard override that Mr. Rull, who just asked to speak, that his group proposed to us. They had a lease on the property, but it was the only one that we saw. So if there were to be another company that came in with the billboard proposal, I have no idea where they would put it. Imagine along Route 3 somewhere, because that's the most visible, but we have not seen anything like that yet.
Mr. Henderson?
Steve Henderson, 1118 Hanover Street. I just have a question to understand the, the current motion. So if we, if we're voting in support of this, we're voting to refer it for further study? If we vote no on this, what, what happens?
If you vote no, it's not referred, and it sits basically waiting for someone to make another motion, or we move on and it just, nothing happens. Sort of an odd situation. Refers usually pass. Any further questions on motion to refer to the planning board for further study? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to refer will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Referral to study, further study carries. And we move to Article 32. Amend general bylaws, section 6.9, signed bylaw, section 2, authority and interpretation. Ms. O'Connor?
We move that the town refer this article to the select board and the planning board for further study. I note that there is a slight change in the motion to add the planning board in addition to the select board there. Our commentary is essentially the same as the commentary for Article 31, but for the benefit of those here, I will reread it, since it is brief. In early March, a private group presented to the select board seeking to work with the town on a location for a billboard on Route 3. Seeing merit in the proposal as a low-cost and low-impact way to generate non-tax revenue, the select board asked for an overlay district to be prepared for consideration on the annual town meeting warrant. However, we understand there is more work to be done to understand the nuance and ramifications of this proposed overlay district, so we have supported remanding this back to the planning board for additional study.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
This article is a companion article to Article 31, which has been referred for further study.
Questions or comments? Article 32. Seeing none, majority vote to refer to the select board and the planning board for further study. All those in favor of the motion to refer will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Article 33. Appropriate funds. King Street, Circuit Street, Water Line.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the sum of $2 million be appropriated for the replacement of the water main and related work on King Street from West Hanover Square to King Street, and on King Street from Circuit Street to School Street. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Hanover's water system deadends at the Hanson-Hanover line at King Street. This impacts fire flows and water quality along King Street because water that deadends does not circulate. Last year's annual town meeting appropriated $875,000 to replace roughly 2,000 feet of old cast iron water main with new ductile iron pipes on King Street from Briarwood Drive neighborhood to the Hanson line. This improvement, now completed, was a necessary step to enhance fire protection and water quality in that section of town, which historically has had discolored water issues on occasion. In addition to the newly completed King Street Water Line, the Water Department installed an automated bleeder at the end of King Street. This automated bleeder flushes water on a regular basis, much like hydrant flushing, to cycle out old water for new, further enhancing water quality in that section of town. As of 2024, the water distribution pipes along King Street from School Street to the Hanson line are new. In order to fully solve King Street's problems, we are now turning our attention to some of the lines feeding King Street. Replacing the current 10-inch cast iron water main from West Hanover Square along Circuit Street to the King Street-School Street intersection with a 12-inch ductile iron pipe will further enhance the water quality and fire flows for all King Street, as well as that portion of Circuit Street. Once this Circuit Street line is installed, the next potential upgrade that may be needed would likely be the 10-inch cast iron line along School Street that also feeds King Street. DPW has reason to believe, based on data collection and consumer complaints, that Circuit Street is the main culprit to the issues in the area, but the School Street line cannot be ruled out as an adding to the problem. Upgrading the town's old cast iron pipes to ductile iron pipes has the benefits of eliminating corrosion and discolored water, as well as reducing waterline breaks because ductile iron has greater tensile strength relative to cast iron.
Questions or comments? Article 33. Ah, Mr. Deniak. Mr. Deniak is not a resident of the town. He speaks without objection. Mr. Deniak.
Just as a point of order, I believe the motion by the advisory committee needs to be changed. The advisory committee moved to replace the water main and with related work on King Street from West Hanover Square to King Street. That should say Circuit Street from West Hanover Square to King Street. And then the rest of the language seems, seems appropriate.
Sir, so in the first sentence, for the replacement of the water main and related work on Circuit Street from West Hanover Square to King Street?
That's correct.
And on King Street from Circuit Street to School Street?
That's correct. And just because it's a borrowing thing, I don't want.
Absolutely. So it's the first word, King, becomes Circuit is the only change?
That's correct.
Mr. Moderator.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Doctor?
Would you state we're amenable to the friendly amendment?
Actually, since he's not a resident, I would prefer that you move to amend your own motion, striking King Street and replacing it with Circuit Street? You could say so moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Would anyone like to comment on Mr. Doctor's amendment? Just the amendment? I don't think so. All those in favor of the amendment being added will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The amendment is added. We're now doing related work on Circuit Street from West Hanover Square to King Street, and on King Street from Circuit Street to School Street. And now I'll come up here for a question or comment.
Heather Friedman, 42 Cross Street. On the, the advisory manual mentioned the 875,000 appropriated for last year for the replacement, was all of that money spent for that replacement?
We'll see if we can get you an answer. Do you know?
Victor Deniak, Director of Public Works. I don't have the exact number. We're pretty close to the full appropriation being done, but we have not received all the bills yet, so we may end up having to do a little more, more asphalt work.
Further questions or comments? Article 33. Seeing none, this requires 2/3 to borrow, and we are voting on the advisory committee's motion as amended. So all those in favor of the advisory committee's motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 34. Appropriate funds. PFAS upgrades.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the sum of $1,750,000 be appropriated for the design of upgrades to the town's three water treatment plants to remove PFAS in the town's drink waters to levels compliant with the levels that are required by the opposed regulations of the Environmental Protection Agency. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of
Ted Hickey, 108 Circuit Street. If I'm reading this correctly, we're borrowing 1.75 million to do some studies on how we might possibly comply with some regulations that might be finalized in the future. I don't know why we would be, want to be out in front of the curve on having a design ready to go on this. These new PFA standards in the water treatment community are considered one of the most radical things that's been proposed ever by the EPA. There isn't a community in America that's not going to struggle to comply with these, and this unfunded mandate is going to get a lot of backlash. I don't see why we want to be out in front. Is there a reason that we, this year is the year that we need to drop $2 million to study a problem that isn't a problem yet?
I don't think it asks for a response. I think it's, he's made a statement. Unless somebody would like to comment. Further questions or comments before I go back to Ms. Keegan? Do you have a question in that, Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, there was a question. I'd like to hear from Mr. Deniak why we would get ahead of this.
Okay.
Victor Deniak, Director of Public Works. Couple things. Number one, the proposed regulation became a final rule with the EPA about a month ago. So now there's a three-to-five-year compliance timeline for all communities nationwide to meet this standard. The EPA website, I was looking at it the other day, they're, they're suggesting there's between 6,000 and 15,000 communities in the U.S. that are going to have to do some kind of treatment. That same website is also talking about 200 billion or so available through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. Whether that comes to fruition, I don't know. The reason to do it now is because there's a, there's a time period that's going to take to meet compliance. We're asking for design money, not study money, design money at this point, with the goal of coming back to next May's town meeting with a construction project. The idea of doing it now buys you a couple of things. Number one, you're getting ahead of the curve, so you're not competing with 6,000 other communities for the materials. That's probably the biggest reason to do it now. I agree with you, Mr. Hickey, that it's pretty controversial, but the EPA has basically made a decision to drive PFAS to zero in public water supplies nationwide. And that's why they've gone from a 70 parts per trillion advisory limit, which at one point was like 300 parts per trillion, but it went to 70, and then some states brought it down to 20 for the sum of six PFAS compounds, to now down to four parts per trillion for two compounds that we have trouble with. And that four is based upon, what I understand is a two-part per trillion testing limit. So, you know, the test, you're talking parts per trillion, that, that's a very, very small number in this. It's difficult to be, be accurate in that kind of testing. But EPA is basically saying that no level of PFAS is safe, and this is a long-term exposure. And so I guess the reason now to do it is, you can wait a year, you can wait two years. At some point, DEPA is going to tell you, you have to do it, and then you're going to be, you know, scrambling to get the job done. And not only are you scrambling for supplies, you're also scrambling for construction companies who are capable of doing the work, while 100 to 200 other communities in Massachusetts are also trying to find those people. We hope to get ahead of the curve, maybe get some grants, certainly get into the state
See if we can get an answer. Mr. Deniak, you want to comment on the sum and whether there's stages to it?
The sum is a budget number provided by our engineering firm that we, we've employed. We did interview multiple firms. There's pieces of the project that have to happen in this case. Number one, we have to do some conceptual work, which we've actually already started through the budget process, identifying potential places where we could put the treatment buildings if we had to. We're looking at the Beal plant, which sits in a 500-year flood plain, about possibly converting that to just a pump station. So if global warming rises, the level of the North River, we, we don't get flooded out. We have to basically submit an idea or a proposal to the state, and they have to grant us approval to do pilot testing, which is basically small-scale, you rent a filter vessel, and you put your water through this filter vessel, and you see if it's going to work. And so that's just another step in the process. And then basically after that, you, sometimes we'll do multiple types of media as part of that, that process. We've gone through this before when we, we treated the Broadway Plant, where we had untreated sources that we had to kind of prove, you know, the technology was going to work. Then finally, at the very end, DEPA reviews everything and gives you thumbs up or thumbs down, and then we go to the town meeting, and the town meeting gives us the final approval, thumbs up or thumbs down. So, you know, could you stage it? I think to stage it, the, the logical way of staging it would be to say, do the Pond Street plant first, but I think you risk losing the Beal plant, the Broadway plant, if you exceed the four-part per trillion numbers. DEPA may turn around and say, you can't use those as sources anymore, and those are your only sources. So that's the reason to try, get ahead of it right now.
Thanks, Victor.
Heather Friedman, 42 Cross Street. I just want to let the people know that I just looked that up, and it says that also along with that, the EPA announcing the, their final ruling on reducing the PFA exposures, they also concurrently announced a further $1 billion to help states and territories implement PFAS testing and treatment at public water systems, and to help owners of private wells address the PFAS contamination. So just for everyone's education, edification, they're also, along with those, they are saying that there is money available.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Sure. Pete?
Maralia, 710 Center Street. I've been in Hanover for a little while now, and I've long enough to know that I hear there's water issues. Mr. Deniak, could you comment on if we're driving PFAS down to four parts per trillion, if we could expect water, water quality improvements for other contaminants?
Mr. Deniak.
Victor Deniak, Director of Public Works. It wouldn't be a town meeting if we didn't have this discussion. Every day, I have a staff of seven treatment plant operators who try to put out the best water that they can, and we, we do a pretty good job coming out of the treatment plants. water that they can, and we do a pretty good job coming out of the treatment plants. We have a distribution system that is 60 to 70 years old. Tonight, you voted $2 million to replace a length of cast iron pipe that is basically leaching old iron back into the water. That's one of the kinds of color problems that you see. We've become very aggressive in our flushing program, which has helped water quality improvement, helped water quality townwide, reduced a lot of our complaints. We have the THM issue, that trihalomethanes are disinfection byproducts, and we've more or less solved that problem, but you solve a problem here, sometimes another problem pops up there. PFAS is not something that any of us want to deal with. It's in your water, it's in everyone's water. Our goal is to drive it to zero, and the way that you take it out of the water is you basically put your clean water through a gravity filter that has granular activated carbon, or there's some resins, or you can put it through membranes of certain types, but GAKs used to be the way that's the least expensive and the most effective for us. And so basically, you have a big coffee can filter, and you're pouring the water on the top, it's like a big Brita filter, and it comes out the bottom. And what makes it so expensive is, you know, all that equipment that you have to buy to make it work, but also, you know, we are chlorinating our water for public health purposes, and you have to, and believe me, if you didn't chlorinate your water, everyone in this room would be sick every day. So basically, you have to get the PFAS out before you add the chlorine in, because the chlorine will be absorbed by the GAK. So GAK is basically just a coal that has a lot of surface area, and it acts like a sponge, and it will suck up a lot of different things, including PFAS, but including other things that at some point in the future will probably be discovered in your water as testing gets better. So I don't know if I really answered that question. It's kind of like whack-a-mole, but science is getting better, and we're finding more and more things nationwide, and we're dealing with them as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. Grun.
Eric Grun, 70 Heritage Way. You mentioned, or it's mentioned, $15 million total cost, and I was happy to see grants written in there and other programs. So who specifically in Hanover, like the title of their job, will be seeking grants over time or other funding sources? Thank you.
Mr. Deniak, Mr. Clenzell?
I think we'll be working on that directly also with our consultants that will be engineering and...
Getting close.
Besides myself and Victor and Chelsea Stevens, our finance director, we'll also be working directly with the consultant engineers, who will be helping us design this, that will be helping us look for and seek all eligible grants and other funding for the project.
Further questions or comments? Article 34. Seeing none, this requires two-thirds to borrow. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'll see hands on that. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will raise their hands. All those opposed? Motion achieves the necessary two-thirds. Article 35. Appropriate funds. Stetson House Cobbler's Shop restoration.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. The Community Preservation Act allows for a surcharge to be assessed on property taxes that the state will match in some part, and that can only be used for specific purposes. Use of CPA funds does not affect property taxes and cannot be used towards the operating budget. CPA funds in Hanover are handled through the Community Preservation Committee, which reviews all applications through a public hearing process. This article is funded as a historical project, and there are $1,114,649 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammer Hook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Committee met at a public hearing at Town Hall on January 30th, as required by the Community Preservation Act, Chapter 44B, at which we voted to support this funding request and moved to submit this article for consideration at this town meeting. This application was submitted to the committee by the Historical Society in the amount of $5,000. Just to get ahead of myself, there'll be five total warrants from Community Preservation. Four of them are for funds totaling $39,000. The last is a transfer of funds to the Affordable Housing Trust. For this article, the Cobbler's Shop dates from the 1850s and is a typical example of a 10-footer, a small detached vernacular architecture building common in New England during the first half of the 19th century. It was moved to the Stetson House grounds in 1992. After being moved to the Stetson grounds 30 years ago, it's in need of attention. The project will include restoration carpentry, cleaning, and an upgrade to the electrical wiring. If this article is approved, it is expected that the project will be completed by the end of the year, and so the committee recommends that the town vote to accept this article as printed.
Questions or comments? Article 35. Seeing none, all those in favor, this requires a simple majority, all those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 36. Appropriate funds. Digital collections preservation.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article is funded as a historical project, and there are $1,114,649 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammer Hook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The committee met at a public hearing on January 30th, as required by the Community Preservation Act, at which we voted to support this funding request and moved to submit this article for town meeting consideration. This application also from the Historical Society in the amount of $10,000. This project, if approved, will enable the society to scan and digitize its valuable manuscripts, photographs, scrapbooks, posters, and other library and archival materials in its collection. It will allow for the purchase of the hardware needed to create digital, a digital lab for this project, which requires a flatbed scanner, an overhead scanner, two laptop computers for processing, and an external hard drive for storage and backup. If this article is approved, it too will be completed by the fall of 2024, and we recommend that this article be accepted as printed.
Questions or comments? Article 36. Seeing none, simple majority, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 37. Appropriate funds. Rail Trail Ellis Connection.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town appropriate $15,000 from Community Preservation Act funds for the cost associated with the permitting and engineering of a trail from a point roughly at the current terminus of the rail trail in West Hanover near the Drinkwater River to an ending point on the Ellis Field property. Annual town meeting in 2021 appropriated $250,000 from CPA funds to extend the rail trail from the Rockland Line to the Drinkwater River in Hanover. Those funds, coupled with a grant obtained by the town from the Mass Trails Grant Program, have been used to complete the work to date on the West Hanover portion of the rail trail. The rail trail project is an excellent community amenity enjoyed by many residents. The purpose of this connector trail is to allow users of the trail to reach a point of interest rather than the current dead end, and the goal is to build this portion of trail in a manner that continues the rail trail network for those with mobility issues, those on bikes, and/or those pushing strollers, et cetera. The original submission of this article included the full cost of permitting, engineering, and construction for a 620-foot-long boardwalk. However, because the permitting and engineering has not been completed at this time, due to the fact monies have not been authorized for that purpose, the estimated construction costs provided for in the request for funding have been estimated at a high amount. While the advisory committee fully appreciates the reasons for overestimating the full construction cost as part of this request, we believe the most prudent and financially responsible path forward is for town meeting to appropriate the monies required to fully engineer and permit this project to a shovel-ready state. Town meeting next year will have the benefit of a fully vetted plan for construction with known costs, so we ensure funds are spent wisely, and voters know exactly what they're getting for their money. Handling this project in the manner suggested here should not disrupt the timeline for completion in a significant way, because there are likely wetland issues that will need to be dealt with during the engineering and permitting phase, naturally entailing a slowdown in that process. If all goes well, and the town is able to engineer and permit a connector trail from Ellis Field to the rail trail, and if next year's annual town meeting voters feel comfortable with the final plan and associated costs, the project could be constructed and completed next summer. This article is funded as an open space project, and there are $786,092 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammer Hook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The committee met at a public hearing at Town Hall on January 30th, as required by Chapter 44B, at which we voted initially to support the full funding in the amount of $250,000. Subsequently, we met on April 17th, at which we adopted the advisory committee's motion in recommendation. We urge you to support the advisory committee's motion.
Questions or comments? Mr. Evans.
Ken Evans, 481 King Street. I have walked this trail many times. This is just a right turn at the river, and is this going to stop the rail trail from continuing down because the rail used to go much farther into Hanover, down to what used to be Printing Company and the industrial park down that direction? Is it going to stop that, or is that going to continue at some point in time?
We'll see if we can get an answer. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Mr. Scarpelli?
Our hope is that, well, we don't own the land yet, the town doesn't own the land yet to go beyond the Drinkwater River. It's owned by a private individual, so, and that's why there's a chain link fence at the end of the trail. But it's our full hope that the land gets purchased and the trail continues as far as we can make it go. But the, we've been referring to the trail, the, between the rail trail and Ellis Field as kind of a spur, and it is, when everything is complete, we hope we get as far as to at least Mayflower Road, but also have the connection from just before the Drinkwater River to the parking lot at Ellis Field. That's the plan. That's the hope.
Further questions or comments? Article 37. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority, all those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 38. Appropriate funds. Stetson House interior redesign.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article is funded as a historical project, and there are $1,114,649 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammer Hook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. Our committee met on January 30th, as required by the statute, at which we voted to support this funding request and moved to submit this article for consideration at this town meeting. This application, again, by the Historical Society, is in the amount of $9,000. The project will involve a close inspection of the downstairs repair work where necessary, painting of select interior spaces, and cleaning of windows, the hearth, and fireplaces. This will also include a new interpretive plan of the first floor based on the history of the Stetson family. A new gallery area will be created, including a needlework gallery displaying the 13 samplers in the collection of the society, in maritime and military history, in the architectural history of the house. This new display will include cases, interpretive graphic panels, artwork hanging systems, mounts, and interactive pieces. An online component, complete with images and graphics, will be added to the society's website to enable virtual visits. This project, if approved, will be completed, hope to be completed by December of this
Further questions or comments? Article 38. Seeing none, simple majority, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 39. Appropriate funds. Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $164,542 from the Community Housing Reserve Fund to be transferred to the Hanover Affordable Housing Trust as set forth in this article. This article is a routine housekeeping article to transfer funds into the Affordable Housing Trust. This will enable the Affordable Housing Trust to act promptly in order to make acquisitions related to affordable housing.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammer Hook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The committee met at a public hearing at Town Hall on January 30th, as required by the statute, at which we voted to support this funding request and moved to submit this article for consideration by this town meeting.
Questions or comments? Article 39. Seeing none, simple majority, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So, motion carries. Article 40. Addition of new dog licensing fees.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article would add an option for dog owners to obtain a three-year license or the current one-year license. The town clerk's office handles dog licenses and reports that this added option will allow for added efficiency for both residents and staff.
Questions or comments? Article 40. Seeing none, simple majority, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So carries unanimously. Before I open Article 41, I will remind the meeting that this is a zoning bylaw discussion, and there are certainly people that may have strong opinions on it, and they're welcome to come to the microphone and make your strong opinions, but it is a discussion of a zoning bylaw, and I will be very tight on decorum. Ms. Brignoli.
Mr. Moderator. Marian Brignoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. I don't know how much you all know about the MBTA bylaw, so I'm going to take, kind of take it from the beginning and then go through.
Ms. Brignoli?
It affects Hanover.
Ms. Brignoli, you have to start with your main motion and then go to commentary.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We moved that the town amend...
Wait, and that you held a meeting. Sorry, I'm going to take you all through this. That you held your meeting...
First, don't I make the motion first, then say pursuant to, then go to the town?
You're right, you're right. I stand corrected. Sorry, ma'am.
I've been doing this for a while. We moved that the town amend the Hanover zoning bylaws with the insertion of the new section 6.17.0 for the multifamily overlay district and corresponding changes to the zoning map as printed in the warrant.
So I'm going to have to pause you there, Marian, because that's not the, that's not the motion that we had in the warrant, and that's not the motion Ms. Harder-Burnier has. We had, we moved that the town accept Article 41 as printed in the warrant. Now, you, do you want to change the main motion to what you just said?
Yes, please.
All right, you're going to have to read it. Well, you have a printed copy of it?
Yes, I do.
Do you have a spare one?
I'll share.
Go ahead, and we'll get it at the end. Thanks.
Thank you. Would you like me to reread the motion?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Zoning Act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in person and by Zoom in the second-floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, 550 Hanover Street, Hanover, Massachusetts. As I was, so my commentary? Thank you. I don't know how much you all know about this law, so I thought I would take it from the beginning and move through it and tell you how it will affect Hanover. The state legislature passed the MBTA Communities Act in December of 2020, as proposed by Governor Baker. Governor Baker signed it into law on January 14th, 2021. The MBTA Community Act requires MBTA communities to create a zoning ordinance or bylaw via an overlay zone that... an overlay zone that provides for at least one district in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. Such housing shall be without age restriction and shall be suitable for families with children. Phase one of this was submitted by January, in January 2022, which it had to be. And phase two for communities such as Hanover is due on December 31st, 2024. Ian Lee, our Assistant Town Manager and CDMI Director, myself, Joe Stack, Hanover's Building Inspector, Giuseppe Fornaro, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, we all took it upon ourselves to complete this process. We've been working with this act for the past year and a half. MBTA communities were required to complete and submit a multi-page complex document called the Compliance Application. Ian was, Ian Lee was able to secure a grant for $25,000, which enabled us to hire a consulting firm recognized by the state to assist us through the complicated process. We hired Viness, Handen, and Brewston, also known as VHB. Under the law, there are three, am I too loud? Under the law, there are three categories for municipalities. The first being commuter rail communities. These communities have direct MBTA train and/or commuter rail service. Adjacent communities are towns or cities which are but a community with train and/or rail service. Category three are adjacent small communities which also are but commuter rail towns but have a population of under 7,000 residents. Since Hanover abuts Hanson, we are considered an adjacent community. Adjacent communities throughout the state are required to identify a parcel or parcels of land on which a minimum of 750 units could be built with the density of 15 units per acre. The parcel or parcels must have a minimum of 50 acres. Parcels can be public or privately owned, built out, or vacant. The act, it's important to note that the act does not include language that says the housing shall be built. Working with the consulting firm VHB, we were able to identify five sites due to their acreage, location, that warranted further study. We found that four of the sites were deemed unworkable because of one or more of the following issues: water resource protection district restrictions, zoning restrictions, lack of egress, or size. The fifth site checked all of the boxes and was free of any of the obstacles we found in the other four properties. The retail portion of Hanover Crossing is the site submitted to the state for compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Ian, Joe, and I met with repri, excuse me, representatives of Hanover Crossing, Mr. Ed Callahan and Mr. Mike Hoban, to lay out and discuss our proposal. Both gentlemen were very knowledgeable about the MBT Act, MBTA Act, and did not voice any concerns. Hanover's compliance application was filed on February 23rd, 2024. Mr. Moderator will probably say this, but I'll add it. In voting for acceptance of this warrant article, it is important to note that unlike previous zoning articles that we've all passed over the years that required a two-thirds vote, the MBTA Act only requires a 50% plus one vote.
Is that all of your commentary?
It is.
Okay, great.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We support. We support the motion of the Planning Board.
Questions or comments under Article 41? Coming to the mic over here.
Mr. Moderator. John Geary, 248 Mans Drive. Considering we just approved the override for level service funding, and we've heard many promises for no more overrides in the next five years, can we please have some additional commentary from either the AdCom or department heads of how multifamily development that's proposed in Article 41 potentially impact those educational municipal services, specifically Section 6-17-5A1, which is 15 units at 71 acres, over 1,000 units total? And I would also respectfully ask for some commentary, commentary from the advise, excuse me, from the Select Board. Thank you.
We'll see if we can get an answer on impact, essentially, impact of such a facility on services in town. Mr. Colangelo, do you have a comment on that?
I mean, the quick answer to Mr. Geary's question is that, you know, we have not done any sort of impact analysis. You know, certainly like when Hanover Crossing proposed the commercial and the apartments, when those were formal proposals, we absolutely went through and did formal impact analysis. We just have not done that for, for this zoning proposal at this point.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Second, oh, oh, okay, yeah. Please, comment.
Thank you. Miriam Brignoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Hanover, Massachusetts. Some of you may have been reading about many of the towns who voted no against for this article. Mr. Colangelo was right, we have not done any studies on this because we're only supposed, this is only supposed to be an exercise. We're just identifying parcels. But, think about this. 750 apartments, take a third of that, 250. 250 kids in the school system. 250 calls from fire, police. 750 cars on the road. I think you can all figure that out for yourself as far as the impact is concerned. I don't know what the advisory committee will say, and perhaps they have a better answer than I do, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just telling you things that I have learned in the year and a half that we have dealt with this.
Mr. Doctor.
Mr. Moderator. The, the primary factor in the advisory committee's assessment is the loss of potential grant funds from the state. So we know that other municipalities have voted down such planning and have lost significant grant funds. Our, our leaders do a great job of getting grant funds from the state, and we would be possibly set up to lose significant funds. In the presentation from the Planning Board at the Advisory Committee meeting, it was presented that this really is a check-the-box necessity to move forward and meet our legal obligations with the state. This in no way means that development would start anytime soon, and we would be able to watch what happens with Milton's ongoing litigation and what's happening with other towns to potentially make adjustments in the future. But we do know for certain that if we move forward and voted this down, there's a high probability that we would lose state grant funds, just like Milton is doing right now. And in this budget cycle, which is tight, and when we're talking about the override and talking about an increase in taxes, the idea of shooting ourselves in the foot and losing significant grant monies, which the Finance Director can talk to, the amount that we have received seems unwise and ill-advised.
Is that a handoff? Is Ms. Stevens speaking?
Chelsea Stevens, Finance Director. So as Mr. Doctor mentioned, there would be a risk of us losing some state grant funds, including, just for example, we've received Mass Works grant money, well over a million dollars over the last three fiscal years, as well as a Mass Trails grant that we received, grants similar to that, we would be at risk of not being approved for going forward if this were to be shut down.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. O'Connor.
On behalf of the Select Board, I think we generally agree with the responses that have been provided by Chairman Doctor and Mr. Colangelo. In addition to the loss of grant funds, one of the things that we considered was the risk of incurring significant litigation fees if we were to become one of the committees that strongly oppose this, whereas we, we don't know where things would ultimately land and where this is just an identification as opposed to any agreement to allow development or anything to that effect. Additionally, like I said, we have not committed to any development, and our understanding is that this, this area being identified is where the mall has currently been, or just the Hanover Crossing has just been redeveloped. And just practically speaking, I mean, that's been, that's a significant project, and my understanding from the town is that there's no, absent the owners of the developers tearing the, that new, that new development down and rebuilding residential in its place, which I would imagine would not be something that would even be something if I were a developer I would even consider after such a significant investment for a very long time. There is no way that the structure of the existing mall could support having apartments built on top of it, so there's no risk that it's going to be built there unless what's currently there is gone. And so, given that, in the face of the significant negative impact that the town could face in grant money and litigation, et cetera, if we did not at least identify this parcel, the Select Board was supportive of this bylaw, or excuse me, this amendment.
So I appreciate, Mr. Geary, that we didn't get the level of analysis you were seeking because apparently it hasn't been done, so I am going to move on to the, to the next question. And I believe that.
Thank you.
Ms. Estrocks.
Yes, Caleb Estrocks, 67 Washington Street. Thanks everyone for the work you put into this. I've been reading up on, a lot on the, on the subject, and it sounds like Hanover, a lot of other communities are really kind of in a corner with this, and there's just a lot of figuring out to how to, how to make this work. I'd love to know where our T-stop is, but I know it's, it's in Hanson, it's not that close. My big question is if this, if we approve this now, how much leverage does the town have with planning a potential project if it did go forward? I'm assuming this isn't just a free pass for someone to build whatever they want, we can put in height restrictions and other restrictions we have on it. I guess that's my, my first question. And then particularly, there is a component in there, I think, that mentions 10% affordable housing component. I, I, we've worked hard in this town in the past to make sure that we stay above that, that 10% number to keep us immune from unfriendly 40B projects. Could that number, that 10%, be increased slightly? Make it 15% or a number that we, we might need to make sure that the town stays above that 10% as other development projects happen that don't have any affordable component?
So mainly we'll, we'll see if we can get, Ms. Brignoli, do you know if that has, if the zoning bylaw gives the Planning Board still significant input in what project would ultimately be built? If you could come up to the mic, please?
It does. The law doesn't say anything about affordable meaning low income because the, the term affordability means something differently to me than, than, you know, obviously to the state. So, they just use the word affordable. They would probably be market value units and our 10%, I don't think that's written in stone. Do you think, Ian, I think we may be able to change that. We could try.
And would we have like permit reviews and things like that on what got built there if something ultimately got built? Would you still have permit reviews and normal bylaw, normal Planning Board activities if somebody actually proposed a project?
Yes and no. Some of it will just be by right. And we won't. And as far as, may I address another comment that was made?
Please.
I'm not advocating for this one way or the other, but I think that there are questions that residents should be asking that no one's thinking about. And the only reason I'm saying this is because I've talked with a lot of town planners and people in different towns, and the town of Pembroke passed their, their MBTA zoning in the fall, and they say now that they wish they had asked more questions, they didn't know enough about it. So I just want you to be educated when you're deciding on this. I have heard, we have heard, that the mall was chosen because of exactly what Mrs. O'Connor said, the probability of the buildings being taken down was slim. It's not why we chose it. And I don't think that the probability of taking the buildings down is slim, I don't think that's even necessary. Many, many of those storefronts are not, don't have anybody in them. The empty storefronts could be retrofitted to contain one, two, three stories. There is far more money in apartments than there is in retail at the moment, and there's nothing stopping anyone from building this once they get the approval.
I'll come down here to the front.
Ann Roselle, 147 Pleasant Street.
That microphone's actually been kind of problematic. Why don't you, if you could walk across to the podium, that's been a tough microphone the whole meeting.
Ann Roselle, 147 Pleasant Street. Is that too loud?
That's perfect.
I'm the teacher who spoke last night in favor of Article 9. I taught 16, I taught classes of 16 students and I taught classes of 28 to 30 students. I can tell you, I was able to reach a lot of students and improve their MCAS scores by having the ability to have more one-on-one time with my students. That was when I had 16 to 18 students in my class. If this were to pass, it would end up being like Waynes, the Air Force Base. The Air Force Base was going to be turned back over to the towns, contingent on it being retail space. There are hundreds of apartments there now. Waynes had an influx of students, we were at capacity, we had to build a new building. Maria Weston Chapman, we had to get an override in order to have that done. I would not trust the state. At some point, I understand we would possibly lose money, but more and more communities are standing up and saying, no, we're not agreeing to this. This is our community, and for the state to come in and tell us what we need to do in our community, I see a real problem with that. And at some point, I feel like you got to make a stand because we just put in an override because we don't have enough money to keep our teachers. But by all means, let's vote something in where we can end up having an influx of hundreds of students in Hanover. We just don't have the capability to have that. So, we've just put in for an override, it's going to be gone. So we may lose grant money, but how much are we going to end up paying out in the end? I think that it's far worse if we do vote this in. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson.
Steve Anderson, 118 Hanover Street. So just a couple of things that I was noting from the Planning Board's presentation. I noticed the deliberate use of shall versus will for the construction of residences, which I thought was, was relevant. Also, the, I noticed that these, if they are constructed, would be 750 houses of taxpayers and additional residents to add to the community. Aside from, I guess my question is this, aside from more people in and around Hanover Crossing, which it already seems to have every day more and more, has the tax impact of having 750 additional tax-paying families been estimated, measured as to what their revenue would be from that in light of the comment that was just mentioned? Because it, it seems like that would be a pretty significant number.
I appreciate the question and will seek an answer. I'm expecting, it's like Mr. Geary's questions, the details haven't been studied to that level, but Mr. Colangelo, have we looked at it at all?
Exact same answer to Mr. Geary's question. We have not looked at impacts. We have not looked at impacts from increased demands on services or increased potential revenues at all.
Ms. Ryerson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think, oh, I'm sorry, Viola Ryus in 1 Foley Hill Lane. We have a social responsibility to provide reasonable housing for people or opportunities for housing in all communities. That being said, there are a lot of communities in Massachusetts that are more sparsely populated than the communities within a 20-mile radius or 30-mile radius of Boston, who seem to be targeted the most with this new adventure in housing. As Miriam Brignoli has said, had said, we're told that we will lose funding or we'll lose grant money. And I remember hearing that about 20 years ago from a state rep when another- And I remember hearing that about 20 years ago from a state rep when another proposition came through to change our zoning. Maybe a year or two later, all of the funds that we were supposed to get dried up. So it was an empty, an empty promise of retribution, in my opinion. I don't think that there's much we can do about the state wanting us to do this. I can understand where it's coming from. However, I do agree with Mrs. Brignoli that we have to look at this very carefully and also watch what's happening in other towns. Voting for this tonight, voting to put in this particular overlay invites builders' imaginations as to what they can do with it. And I know from my own family that building multi-units is a lot more profitable, especially under 40, not just 40B but 40R, which allows for a larger profit for builders. So I'd like to know from Mrs. Brignoli how she feels about us punting with this, saying no tonight and looking, sending it back for further review. If there's some way we can stall before we make this decision. Thank you.
Ms. Brignoli, do you have any comment about waiting a year? Obviously, you've chose to bring it forward, but do you have any comment with regard to what happens if we wait a year? Do you have a comment?
Mary Ann Brignoli, 226 Luchmont Lane. Would you repeat that, please, Mr. Moderator?
Essentially, Ms. Ryerson was saying, what if we refer it back to you to look at for another year and we talk about it at the next town meeting? And what happens in that year? Do we, something bad happen? What happens?
Okay. Adjacent communities have until December 31st, 2024, this year, to file their application. If you, if we don't file an application by then, or the compliance report, as it's called, we will not be in compliance. Not being in compliance because you didn't file your compliance report may be a slight difference than if you say no, only because, well, I don't even know why I said that because I really, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. It's just what I've learned over the past year and a half. I guess I can't answer that.
Fair enough. Mr. Mantel.
Dan Mantel, 64 Paul Road. I was wondering if we could either table this or refer this back to the committee, understanding that there is a December 31st deadline, but maybe it gets considered later in the year, perhaps at a special town meeting, when it is better understood what the state's response will be to Milton and the others.
So now, hold on there for a second. I've heard basically the same thing from you and Ms. Ryerson. Are you moving to refer this back to the Planning Board for further study?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that?
Yeah.
All right. I know I have the next person at the microphone. We are discussing the motion to refer back to the Planning Board for further study, but the same questions are basically still in order of whether we should do this. So even though we're going to discuss and vote on motion to refer, what you had for a relevant comment on the original article is probably still relevant. So go ahead.
Rich Alvucci, 37 Pine Street. The board had a job to do. They did it. I applaud them for doing that. As far as this bylaw, if we put this in, like stated before, anything can happen. It could be built in no time at all. My question to the board is, had it not been forced on them by the state, would they have pushed for this? Would they allow this to happen? I'm just curious of what their feelings are had it been from someone else and not forced by the state.
Any thoughts on, any thoughts on that, Ms. Brignoli?
Would you? I appreciate the question. Personally, as a resident, no.
Back up to this microphone here.
William Hagary, 58 Brookbend Road. What is the impact? How much, how much in grants do we currently receive? Is it 3 million, 10 million? What's the potential loss?
I think we touched on it, Ms. Stevens.
Chelsea Stevens, Finance Director. It does vary. It depends on the grant. Like I said, we did receive over a million dollars in Mass Works grant recently for work on 53. But then there's other grants on here that were only 20,000, another one for a few hundred thousand. So it really just depends on the project and the grant. I can't give an exact amount, but it is, it's not insignificant, I guess, is what I would say.
May I address that?
Ms. Brignoli.
Thank you. But Mary Ann Brignoli, 226 Luchmont Lane. Come visit. I, we have been told that the grants that the police and the fire department write will not be affected. Our fire department writes phenomenal grants and we've received so much from them. And we have been told that they won't be. No, just because we've been told that, who knows?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Ms. O'Connor.
Just while we're discussing what is potentially at stake here, if we don't pass this, if the state were to litigate against us for choosing not to comply, I want to be clear, I'm a lawyer. Litigation is very expensive. So that is a cost that we, as a town, would incur. That would be paid for out of our taxes. So I just want to be clear on that point, that that, it's not just grant money that's at stake. There is another potential significant impact that that could have. I'm not advocating either way. I just want to, I don't want this, us limited to thinking that it's grant money and nothing else that could potentially be an issue.
Mr. Luca.
Steve Luca, 43 King Hill Road. We've seen this come before, other towns, some towns have tried to fight it. We could try to fight it tonight. If we were to stay in compliance, what limits are there to this development? I know we're up against our water permit every year for what we can pull out of the ground. 750 units would use a lot of water. We just approved 1.75 million to develop some new filtration just downstream from that on the Third Herring Brook. So any affluent that would come out of all of these apartments would go right into our largest water aquifer. And so I'd just like to hear maybe from the Water Department or Department of Public Works or Planning Board about what types of limitations we'd be able to put on this, what requirements would have to be in place to make sure that our water is going to be safe and clean. And this development, if it ever takes place, won't pollute our main source of drinking water.
Any comment on the hypothetical, Mr. Deniak?
Victor Deniak, Director of Public Works. It is hypothetical. When we, when the mall was coming, well, Hanover Crossing came in asking for the apartment buildings, they estimated 30,000 gallons a day. And they're actually living below that 30,000. They're around 15,000 to 18,000 a day. This, if it were to get built out at 750 units, they're probably talking about 60,000 to 80,000 gallons a day, maybe, maybe upwards of 100. We have about 100,000 a day available within our cap. So frankly, I've been saying all along, and I don't want to get into politics too much, I'm an advisor here, the state is pushing for housing, obviously, in this term ass. And, you know, they probably ought to be putting up or dangling mass water resources, paying for the extension of the ABWRA pipeline, which is, you know, 25 to 50 million dollars, probably. If it's that important, then the state needs to be a partner in this. So you all have to decide how much you want to fight it. I can't tell you that. Every community is different. We don't have a lot of water. I think if a project came in of this size, at 750, there would certainly be a fight on the town meeting floor. There would certainly be a request for me to stand up and tell you that there's enough water and I'm not sure I could do it. So I don't know where that would lead, probably some kind of lawsuit, I'm guessing, but I can't tell you that the resources are there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Leonie.
Julia Leonie, 106 Dillingham Way. I just was going to have a comment to Ms. O'Connor about the litigation. It's my understanding that a lot of towns are pushing back and that there's currently an effort underway to do a class action lawsuit against the state. I don't know a whole lot more than that. I am not a lawyer. Or I just wonder if we could vote it back to the Planning Board, if that would be something that the town could look into and whether or not Hanover could participate as part of that, where we just voted for the override and now we're talking about all of these other increases. And we've already asked over and over again, or it was asked over and over again last night, for reassurance from all the boards that there wouldn't be any more increases or overrides in the next five years. So I understand, you know, the thought process that we could maybe gain tax revenue from this, but I don't know how, if they're apartments. I mean, the same people who own the Hanover Crossing would own the apartments, so I'm not sure how that all works out. But just, is that something the town could look into? If we vote to send this back, could we be, possibly look into that class action lawsuit to mitigate our litigation costs?
So I appreciate, I appreciate your comment.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes, thank, sorry, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comment. And unfortunately, the, this forum is for the town to decide whether we want to vote in favor of this change or potentially remand it back to the Planning Board for further study. I am unable to comment on the town's litigation strategy or potential litigation strategy at this meeting. So that's not something I do have the authority or ability to provide an answer to, so I apologize for that. But I will say that we will, we will seek to represent Hanover and do the best that we can to preserve our interest and do the best that we can for the town, but I can't speak to our litigation strategy.
I think I'm back up here over.
Hi, Jen Patel, 22 Autumn Lane. I am responsible for hiring staff in Boston in a very competitive healthcare market. And I think it's imperative that we provide housing within less than 30 miles for people to come to this state. People are leaving this state at record numbers. We are going to be unable to recruit talented people for our schools, for all of the services that you guys are looking for. And I just want you to remember that the outlook for people that are coming into the workforce is very different. It's a different landscape and affordable is not necessarily affordable to many younger people. That's all.
Thank you. I think I'm down front here now.
Dan Walker, 50 Old Forge Road. Ultimately, we're asking to amend the zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaws in general are supposed to mitigate the impact of whatever development is being done in the town. I'm hearing from everybody tonight that no one even knows what the impact is going to be. Until we know what the impact's going to be, I don't even know how this should have even been made, you know, to be brought here to do this right now.
Oh, did you have something to add on that, Mary Ann? No, no, go ahead. You're the Planning Board. This is your motion. Well, it's now a motion to refer, but go ahead.
Mary Ann Brignoli, 226 Luchmont Lane. To answer your question, sir, the town did not present this article. This was a state mandate in 2021 that our House of Representatives and our senators voted on, in my opinion, with very little feedback from towns.
I think I'm up here to Ms. Frieden.
Heather Frieden, 42 Cross Street. I was, I'm for referral, but I, I did have a question about the water resources, whether there is anything that the zoning board could put in there about limiting how, how much water that a certain area could use. Is that, is that something the town can, can write into the bylaws?
Any thoughts on that, Ms. Brignoli? Do we have that power in this or is it prescribed by the state what zoning change you'd have to put in?
No, I don't think that, I know the Planning Board doesn't have that power, but I might defer to Mrs. O'Connor. What do you think about that? Do you know anything?
I don't know anything about that, but I will refer to our attorney, Kevin Feely.
Mr. Feely.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Is that loud enough?
Go right ahead. Oh, no.
All right. I get really loud. I'm sorry if I get, if I get-
You gotta get right on that mic.
All right. The, the answer to the question at this point is, is no. But the longer answer is that part of the guidelines that have been promulgated to help towns navigate this, there is a state agency that you work with, with coming out with the, when you put the new bylaw together. So if the town were to refer it back to the Planning Board for additional action, that is certainly a piece of the pie that, that the town working through the Planning Board could go to the state and seek guidance as to whether or not we could include language specifically on the question of water availability.
I just wanted, there are a lot of, these towns are MWRA towns and obviously we are not. So we don't have the same resources as some of these other communities. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm here next.
George, excuse me, George Calbreth, 37 Old Town Way. As far as, you know, withholding grants and stuff like that for the town, sounds like extortion to me. So I would tell the state to go kick rocks. And should, should this pass, it should be negotiated that North Hanover gets a substation for a fire station just for access for any sort of emergencies. I'm sure that the fire department does a fine job of getting there as quick as they can, but, you know, two to three minutes, you know, if there's a station in North Hanover would drastically help out with that development that's already there. Maybe should have been negotiated when Hanover Crossing was being talked about, but that's in the past. Forget it. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll go back up here to the top.
Jason Factor, 34 Briarwood Drive. Quite, I guess, a two-part question. If this is referred back for advisor, or for additional study and consideration, what would the immediate impact be if there is any precedent from the other towns that have done so in terms of the grants? And how is that impacted by either the base budget or the override? Should that be passed in fiscal year 2025? And then additionally, what would the means, if this is referred back for further consideration? What would the means be to present prior to the deadline and stay within compliance? Should that be something that is deemed prudently responsible to adhere to?
Thank you. I mean, I think, I think the core question, and you hit upon what Ms. Brignoli already talked about, is that refer back to the Planning Board for the study does exactly that. Ms. Brignoli, you said that the deadline is the end of the calendar year, correct? So between now and the end of the calendar year, in theory, the Select Board could call a special town meeting to act on what the Planning Board figures out over the next however many months. Doesn't mean that'll happen, but that's sort of the most obvious step of what the town could do. Ms. Brignoli, would it be the Planning Board's intention to look into this further and maybe ask questions about the water or other things like that?
I have, yes, I think that's a good idea. We're hearing it for the first time, time tonight from town meeting, but I do know that there are five towns that have postponed their vote to the fall from their spring town meetings. To say that we would study it, we've studied it. What I think it would be helpful if it was referred back to us was that we would find out what other towns that have said no, what has happened to them, what grants have they lost, have they been sued? I know that Rockport has filed a class action suit. And I think that there are five towns, maybe four, that have joined them. So there's a lot going on around the state. Maybe it would be a good idea for us to table this for now and then wait until the fall, do a special town meeting, which is costly. And look at what has happened to other towns. We can announce that, keep ourselves educated about it, and then make a decision that's the best for Hanover.
Thank you. Mr. Nimasgern, you're next.
Paul Nimasgern, 151 Kendallwood Lane. Could we please vote on the proposed amendment?
Mr. Nimasgern has moved the question. It takes a two-thirds vote to close out debate. All those in favor of closing out debate will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, nay. We move forward to the actual motion. The motion, you don't need it because it's the motion to refer. Mr. Mantell's motion to refer back to the planning board for further study requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to refer will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
We're referred. Motion carries. Article 42, amend the zoning bylaws, section 10.0, purpose and applicability.
Guess what? We do live.
Ms. Brignoli.
226, Chair of the Planning Board. You can't hear me? Is that better? This is Article 42. We move that the town vote to amend the Hanover zoning bylaws under section 10.020, purpose and applicability, by adding the following, and development in the multifamily overlay district in accordance with the provisions of section 6.17.0 is printed in the warrant. Pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 48, section 5 of the zoning act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 18, 2024, at 7:30 PM in person and by Zoom in the second floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, 550 Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. This article adds language for the multifamily overlay district in the corresponding section of the zoning bylaw. But, Mr. Moderator, if we're going to table, which we did, wouldn't this go along with it?
I'm going to come to the advisory committee to move. Yes, you're correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doctor.
Mr. Moderator, we would move to refer Article 42 for further consideration and review to the planning board. This is a companion article to Article 41, which has already been referred for further study.
So I have a motion to refer this as well, refer to planning board for further study.
Second.
Second. Questions or comments on the motion to refer? Streaming up at the top.
Heather Freedman, 42 Cross Street. Would simply putting this with, does the action, the state required application, does it require us to actually have the rules in place, the zoning board, or just a actual, something in our bylaws saying that we have an overlay district, even if we don't have an overlay district?
Mary Ann?
Thank you. Mary Ann Brignoli, 226 Latchmont Lane. We were only required to fill out the compliance report, which is why we hired the engineering firm to help us, and that has to be into the state by December 2024. We've already filed it. We haven't heard back from the state that they have not approved it. We haven't had any issues with it, correct, Ian? Just two?
I'm sorry, we can't hear that at all.
Sorry, I asked Ian Lee a question because she's been dealing with the state. I guess we're going to hear back from them by March, by May 21st, but we haven't heard anything yet, negative, which is a good sign. So to answer your question, I think if we do defer it, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions on the motion to refer? Seeing none, simple majority again. All those in favor of the motion to refer back to the planning board for further study will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously Article 43, amend zoning bylaws, accessory dwelling unit. Ms. Brignoli.
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ann Brignoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. We move that the town vote to amend the Hanover zoning bylaws relative to family accessory dwelling units under section 6, under section 2.100 and section 6.00, as written in the warrant. Pursuant to Mass General law, chapter 48, section 5 of the zoning act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 18, 2024, at 7:30 PM in person and by Zoom in the second floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, 550 Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. Article, this article was brought to our attention by the, through the building inspector. There have been, you know, we have the, I call it the mother-in-law bylaws, an accessory bylaw. It's for, you know, blood relatives, in-laws, whatever. And Mr. Joseph Stack, our building inspector, has found some problems with it, is that it didn't really correspond with the building code. So we sat down as a planning board with Mr. Stack, and we talked about all of this, and this is where we've come. Mr. Moderator, may I have your permission and the permission of the town to ask, their permission, if Mr. Stack, Mr. Stack not a resident, if Hanover could speak?
Please, he is the.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, right. And where is he?
He was over there.
Oh, oh, over there. Okay, great. Best to come across to the far microphone. It works better. Building inspector is not a resident, speaks without objection. Please go ahead. Mr. Stack.
Good evening. My name is Joe Stack. I am the building commissioner for the town of Hanover. What we're looking to do on this amendment is make it a little easier and change some language for an affordable ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. Right now, we have language in the bylaws that require a special permit for all in-law additions or accessory dwelling units, whether they're within the home or attached. My proposal would remove the special permit requirement, as in the building codes, you can have as many kitchens and as many bathrooms in your house as you wish. There's no special permit for it. Our special permits require, if you want an accessory kitchen or an ADU, you have to have a special permit. I'd like to see that changed. The ADU, as designed, is for, you know, typically relatives, blood relatives, by family or marriage, any type of legal connection. I'm looking to expand that. I think it could be open to pretty much anybody, friends, family. It's designed, its intention is for, is for family members, single children that move back home, parents who finally find themselves single, seniors who are basically maybe getting taxed out of their home and have the ability to sell their home to one of their children, build an ADU either attached within or freestanding. The other proposal on this is on a freestanding ADU, that you would be able to build a freestanding unit on your property, provided that it conformed to all the zoning setbacks, it met all Title V requirements, and meet all the building codes. And that would be capped at 800 square feet, capped at two bedrooms, and it'd be freestanding. The verbiage would be put in the special permit that it can no longer, it cannot be subdivided, sold. It always remains as a single-family home with an ADU. That's it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We support the motion of the planning board.
Questions or comments under this article? You've been at the microphone for a while. Thank you for your patience.
My name's Joanne Lynn. I live at 328 Union Street. I'm very much in favor of ADUs. I've spent my life taking care of geriatric patients. Seventy percent of us in the room will have substantial mobility disability at the end of life for an average of two years. ADUs are a very clever solution to a good deal of housing problems, but in order to work, they must have universal design, and that is not in the zoning regulations as written here. They must have single, no-step entry. They must have a wide enough door to get through with a wheelchair or a walker, and they have to have bathrooms that have grab rails and such. So I would encourage that we find a way in which to require that the ADUs that are permitted under this arrangement are disability-adapted at least to mobility issues.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Brignoli or Mr. Stack? Do you want to comment? Was there any intention to include mobility access requirements in the ADUs?
Again, Joe Stack, I'm the building official for the town. Accessible entrance egress, that is really up to the property owners who are decided to build an ADU and what their needs require at that time. There's no state code that requires, there's no building codes, whether it's International IBC or 780 CMR, which is Mass Code, that require you to build accessibility into your home. People build their homes to fit their needs. If you have a disabled child, disabled parent, then by all means, you are certainly entitled to do that. If I may make a note here, sir, the, one of the things in the article here, under letter J, number three, the attached ADU shall not be larger in floor area than 33% of the, shall not be larger than 33% of the floor area of the principal single-family dwelling or 800 square feet. When we met with the planning board, somehow this slipped through. We closed the meeting before we had time to address that, and my opinion is that 33% should be deleted, is I find it discriminatory. It's somebody who has a 1,200-square-foot home, has a parent that needs to come home, they're limited to 400 feet that they can put on their house, where somebody with a 4,000-foot home can pretty much do what they like. And so they're really capped by the size. I think that the 33% should be removed.
Can you cite where that is again?
J3.
Under the article, sir, it's a letter J.
J3.
And it's three, J3.
So, Ms. Brignoli, would you like to, now I don't know what you motioned, because you didn't motion as written in the warrant. You had a different motion than what you gave Ms. Hartaburnier. So, hold on a second. I need to see what your main motion is.
To prove it as it's written on the warrant. No, that's fine. I was concerned on 21. Okay, so that was why I really, no, because I was worried that we ended up in compliance with something else. Okay, so we're fine.
She has to have words. Now I need to know how to mark. So, do you want to get rid of that? Do you want to strike the section like you said? So where's the section? Striking J3 in its entirety?
Yeah. But the court scheduled it to October, so we should, if only we had a answer, so we could do it, but the town meeting maybe it was sent. Okay. No, that's fine. I was just really concerned with non-compliance because a petition was required and one is not submitted, but that's much, okay. So, as a big, when I left, I was a big year, and I want to say it was like six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, okay, I feel better about that now, because that was my only, I'm not against the religion.
All right. By the way, the Celtics won by 25. So, Ms. Brignoli, if you would like to propose your amendment.
Mr. Moderator, yes, I would like to amend my motion by striking J3 in its entirety.
By adding the words at the end of your motion?
By adding the words at the end of the motion as modified by striking, by striking J3 in its entirety.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes.
Can I ask for a point of clarification on what she's requesting to do? Is that okay?
Yes.
So the language in there, I think Mr. Stack's concern was that the 33% discriminates against people with smaller houses, but there was an 800-square-foot cap across the board there, and so now, as modified, there's no cap at all. Is that correct?
Was that your intention, planning board? Do you want to keep the 800-foot cap?
Joe Stack, building official for the town. I believe we're looking to strike that J3 in its entirety. We believe that the ADU should be limited by the zoning setbacks and not necessarily the square footage of an attached or built within in-law. On a freestanding ADU, there is an 800-foot cap, and that is mentioned elsewhere.
Further down?
That is mentioned elsewhere for freestanding units.
So this says that an attached ADU has no limit other than the regular zoning bylaw rules?
Yes, sir.
That is his intention.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So if everybody could look, the section we're actually talking about is section J3, and the amendment, the proposed amendment is to strike section J3 in its entirety. So right now, we're only discussing the amendment. If you'd like to have a question or a comment with regard to striking J3 in its entirety, please come to the microphone. You don't need to renumber. You can leave J3 and say stricken. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we're voting, oh, sorry, I'm here.
Peter Johnson, 168 Broadway. It seems to me that if we eliminate a square footage maximum for an accessory building, you're basically negating single-family zoning, because if you have a big enough lot, let's say you have two acres, you could put a 3,000-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on your lot. Is that not right? If you don't put a minimum, a maximum size on the accessory unit, which I understand you're getting rid of, right?
We are talking only about attached accessory dwelling units, not detached.
An attached unit would be.
No, no, don't do this away from the microphone.
Joe Stack, building official for the town. The attached ADU or within would be limited by zone, by, limited by your zoning setbacks, 50 in the front, 40 the rear, 20 from the sides. We also have setbacks from wetlands, and as we all know, Hanover has a lot of wetlands. A freestanding ADU, we would cap at 800 feet, maximum with two bedrooms, 800 feet, with a special permit, which would allow us to put the deed restrictions required, so it could never be subdivided. It's always remains a single-family home with an ADU. We're good?
Where is that section that says the detached one is 800 square feet?
B3A.
B3A?
Oh, yeah.
Hold on. Want to make sure I see it. Yes, so you have to do three bedrooms. 3A is the two bedrooms, right? 3A, gotcha. Thank you. So B3A limits detached to 800 square feet. So again, we are staying with the motion to amend by striking J3 in its entirety. Questions or comments on the motion to amend? Simple majority, all those in favor of the motion to amend will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries. We're now as amended, and we're back to the main motion as amended. Ms. Ryerson?
The funny thing about reading glasses is that you can break your neck walking. I'm looking at three. I'm sorry. In section three.
No, you have to identify yourself first.
I'm sorry, Viola Riis in One Folly Hill Lane. In section 3G, a detached ADU shall be used only as a rental unit, except that the owner of the property may reside in the ADU while renting the principal single-family dwelling. Either the principal dwelling or the ADU, but not both, may be used as a rental unit at any given time. People who buy in Hanover, and those of us who have lived here over 50 years, bought because we wanted a larger lot to live on. That was then, this is now. Now we have kids who can't afford to go out and buy houses in many instances because the deposits are so.
So again, we are staying with the motion to amend by striking J three in its entirety. Questions or comments on the motion to amend? Simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to amend will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We're now as amended, and we're back to the main motion as amended. Ms. Ryerson.
Funny thing about reading glasses is that you can break your neck walking. I'm looking at three. I'm sorry. In section three.
No, you have to identify yourself first.
I'm sorry, Viola Riis in One Folly Hill Lane. In section three G, "A detached ADU shall be used only as a rental unit except that the owner of the property may reside in the ADU while renting the principal single-family dwelling. Either the principal dwelling or the ADU, but not both, may be used as a rental unit at any given time." People who buy in Hanover and those of us who have lived here over fifty years bought because we wanted a larger lot to live on. That was then, this is now. Now we have kids who can't afford to go out and buy houses in many instances because the deposits are so, so large for them and the interest rates are so high. So naturally, I mean, I'd love to see my son, one of my sons, living in a detached house, a small house on my property. However, I have to consider my neighbors and the fact that they wanted big yards, they wanted to be able to look out and see scenery instead of apartment buildings, which is when you take the main house and you add to it, you add additions, and then you add all kinds of other infrastructure to accommodate more family, that's one thing. But when you start adding on to that in the yard, that's another thing. So I think we need to consider that when we're voting on this. And I don't know what the right answer is, because we know that we have to do something for adults now who are facing the financial encumbrances that are out there with the high interest rates and the ability to pay off tuitions and everything else. But I am very concerned that we create a rental unit in our side yard, that we can just rent to anyone to help us live in the house we're living in. That isn't how this, that wasn't the zoning principle in this town until now, and I'd hate to see that happen here, because that changes our thirty thousand square-foot lots into whatever. They're no longer thirty thousand square-foot lots. They have an appendage on the building that makes that lot now either a ten thousand square-foot lot with a fifteen thousand, I mean, a twenty thousand square-foot lot beside it, depending on what you do for that. I think this needs more work and should be referred back to the planning board. Thank you.
Ms. Ryerson, are you making a motion to refer back to the planning board? Do I have a second on Ms. Ryerson's motion to refer? I do. So, we are now on a motion to refer back to the planning board for further study. Would anybody like to speak on a motion to refer? Mr. Nimasurin.
Paul Nimasurin, one-fifty-one Kindredwood Lane. I believe it says in there that that doesn't split the lot, correct?
Is that correct, that it does not split the lot? It does not split the lot.
So whatever was just said does not apply, correct?
With regard to splitting the lot.
With regard to splitting the lot.
Okay. Would you like to speak further on your motion to refer?
Yes, I would, Mr. Moderator.
Please reintroduce yourself.
Some things you can let go and some things you can't. No, it doesn't split the lot.
Please reintroduce yourself.
Viola Riis in One Folly Hill Lane. It doesn't split the lot, true, but it does. In fact, it does. So let's be honest about it. It doesn't split the lot legally, but in fact, the lot is now split. So now you have a two-family situation on your lot, and I don't know how you feel about that, but if my neighbor did that to me, I'd be pretty upset. Thank you very much.
Speaking on the motion to refer, I'll come up here.
Mark Matheson, ninety-nine Plymouth Road. I just want to make sure, I have dealt with Mr. Stack. I did an addition to my home. We're not talking about willy-nilly decisions to add and create a homestead or anything or an estate. He's talking about special permits. He's talking about special considerations. All of these items have to go in front of boards the same way I did. It's not a matter that this can just happen. Everything has to be approved by the town. Everything has to be agreed to by your neighbors. It's not something that I had to go to every single door in my neighborhood. This does not just happen. This is very much a very succinct process that happens. Hanover Board does, the building department does a phenomenal job of walking you through this entire process. It doesn't just happen. It's not going to go rogue. We're, we're in good shape. We're in good hands with Mr. Stack.
Sir, I meant to come up above first.
Jason Factor, thirty-four Briarwood Drive. As a professional, I am a loan officer, and I would say that as written, this complies very well with the way that mortgage laws have been recently amended in the last couple of months, actually, within the last year. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac have amended the way that they treat ADUs. The state has amended the way that they consider ADUs and has asked a lot of the towns to do the same. And even at the federal level, again, ADUs have been considered a very viable solution to a lot of housing, wealth, and family need issues. So in reading through this, it reads very much like the federal laws and guidelines in most of your mortgages that are already on the properties. So my motion would be to not kick this back for further consideration, but to bring it to a vote.
Thank you. And behind you, continue on.
TJ Coogan, one-thirty-one Sammaset Drive. Last night, probably all of us were here, and one of the things we heard was that senior citizens in this town are struggling to stay here. We have a proposal which gives families the option to bring their children back to Hanover to allow them to stay and their children to stay. We should not relinquish this opportunity to allow more families to do that. Let's keep everyone here. Let's give families the opportunity to expand their homes so that they can have multi-generational families living under one roof on one property. Why would we abandon this opportunity?
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, we are voting on Ms. Ryerson's motion to refer back to the planning board for further study. All those in favor of referring back to the planning board for further study will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion to refer fails. We are now back to the main motion, and before we go and vote on it, any last comments? I see none. Oh, I see one. You gonna try to get up, or you want a microphone? Yeah, can we get him a microphone?
Just have a question as to why we're striking family in the bylaw, or the word families? And are we at risk of our neighbors or anyone developing ADUs to rent or sublease to non-family members, thinking specifically Airbnb, Burma, things like that?
So, the word family is struck out early on, right at the beginning in the first paragraph? Can someone speak to why the word family has been struck?
Yes.
Yep, Mr. Stack.
Case nobody knows who I am yet, Joe Stack, I'm the building commissioner for the town. So in section J, number three, when we deleted that in its entirety, it also included the word "single-family dwelling." In town, we don't have two families. We don't allow them. What we do have, and most people are actually not aware of it, is we actually have in our bylaws, there is, they talk about a boarding house, they talk about renting rooms, and you can do that up to twenty percent of your house right now, twenty percent of the rooms in your house. So we're really not changing that. What we're doing is making it more owner-friendly, more family-friendly, more convenient. This is not something like. Mr. Harder, it's two or three hundred thousand dollars to build one of these. I don't think we're going to be inundated with them.
Mr. Stack, specifically on the very beginning of the entire bylaw, the word family, it said "family accessory dwelling unit attached," a family-attached accessory dwelling unit. The word family was stricken in both of those places, and I think that was really his question, correct?
Mary Ann Brignoli, two-two-six Latchmont Lane. The word family was stricken on purpose. We had a lot of discussion about this, and one of the things we found out that really drove us to take out the word family is that there are in-law apartments throughout town where the in-laws don't live there anymore, and they're rented out through town. We actually have two Airbnbs that operate out of what once was, was an in-law apartment. And you can rent your house right now to anyone you wish, for as long as you wish. Doesn't have to be a family member. So to simplify all of that, we took out the word family.
Okay. Any other questions? So Ms. Brignoli, I'm going to need your motion so that I can read it correctly.
Good thing I typed it out.
So we are voting on the following main motion as amended. We move that the town vote to amend the Hanover zoning bylaw relative to family accessory dwelling units under section two-point-one-zero-zero and section six-point-zero-zero as written in the warrant as modified by striking J point three in its entirety. This is a zoning bylaw change and requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion as amended will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion achieves the necessary two-thirds majority. Article forty-four, appropriate funds, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the bond premium receipts reserve fund for the purposes set forth in this article. Self-contained breathing apparatuses are necessary pieces of equipment for firefighters when they enter hazardous environments, allowing them to breathe clean air. Our current equipment has passed its useful life and is out of compliance with the National Fire Protection Association standards. The aim of this twenty thousand dollars is to cover Hanover's five percent match of a federal grant, which has already been submitted by the town. Hopefully, we will get the grant. The fire department has been historically quite successful with their grant applications. However, if we are not awarded the grant, we will not be able to replace our apparatuses in FY twenty-five and would therefore require a request for the full amount, four hundred thousand dollars, next annual town meeting. Hanover's finance director has identified rebated funds from previous year's borrowing, which were generated from Hanover municipal bond proceeds and will be used to fund this project.
Questions or comments, article forty-four. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously, article forty-five, appropriate funds, ambulance.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the sum of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars be appropriated to purchase and equip an ambulance, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter forty-four of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount. This purchase would replace a twenty-fifteen ambulance that has been driven more than a hundred and thirty-two thousand miles and has seven thousand eighty-three operating hours. The twenty-fifteen ambulance would be traded in or sold. The fire department ambulances are the workhorses of the service. Annual increases in overall calls for medical assistance, combined with more frequently occurring simultaneous and multiple call situations, put a demand on always having safe and reliable ambulances in service. This new ambulance will include updated safety and technology features that will improve safety for both patients and emergency medical personnel. Previously, the town would have waited another year to request funding to replace the twenty-fifteen ambulance. However, the production, design, and ultimate delivery of ambulances nationwide has increased from an average of eight months to thirty months. Given these delays with the supply chain, the fire department is being proactive with this request, so the two thousand and fifteen ambulance does not reach a point where it is a cost burden due to increased maintenance needs and/or completely out of service. Hanover's ambulances typically last ten to twelve years, so the town plans to take out a ten-year note to pay for this piece of equipment. The repayment of this debt will come directly from ambulance receipts and therefore will not directly impact property taxpayers. In addition, this vehicle being used for its day-to-day purposes during emergency events is imperative that the town's frontline vehicles in DPW, police, and fire are properly sized and fully functioning.
Questions or comments under article five, forty-five. Seeing none, this requires two-thirds to borrow. Before I call the vote, I'd first like to thank the advisory committee. This was a very hard year, and you did a lot of work, and I really appreciate the work they did. I will also remind everyone that you have an election coming up, a week from Saturday on the eighteenth, and there's a lot of important things to decide, and there are candidates to vote for, so we all appreciate you getting out for that. So article forty-five requires a two-thirds majority to borrow. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, motion achieves the necessary two-thirds.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Hickey.
Would you like to make a motion to dissolve the meeting?
So moved. All those in favor of dissolving the town meeting will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.